Yep, sounds good. Can you still hear us? Sorry, one more time if you guys could just contest your audio.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Amanda, you sound good?
Great.
And testing again. This is Carrie. Could you hear me? Ron, are you talking? If so, I can't hear you.
You should not be able to hear us for the last like 30 seconds because we... Okay, that's good. It's the video part we're trying to fix, just so you guys know.
Amanda, can you hear us? Craig said, can you unmute for a second? Both here?
I can hear you fine.
Yep, we can hear you.
Do you plan on being here the entire meeting? Because I can move up the budget earlier in the process, but I want to make sure. Move it up? I'll shake your head as a yes maybe, both ears?
I'll defer to Councilor McDonald since he's on a work trip and I'm on a personal trip.
Okay. I can't, I can... Go ahead, Councilor McDonald.
I'm sorry, I'm just taking a look at the agenda here. Yeah, I think that would be helpful to move it up and I'll stay as long as I can.
Yeah, that way if we have any technical challenges, you guys have your... On the roll call, you have it. So I'm going to move it up before the public. So if you're following along, I'm going to do it before a public hearing on national grids petitions, just in the event. We... Because we got... We lost audio before and video, but it's back up now. So that's what we're going to do, okay? Okay, thank you.
Also, Amanda, your audio was just a little low. Carrie's was just kind of disproportionately high. I'm not sure which one, if it's... If you're high. I think yours is low and Carrie's is right on point. So, not totally sure. So my...
And then councilors, if I lose you for whatever reason, we'll try to get you back on, just FYI, and we'll probably just shut video off to save it because there is a little bit of a... As always, this isn't as smooth as everybody thinks it goes, so a little technical challenge there. But you guys can see the video now? You can see the... Okay, good. All right. We're just going to get started in a minute and I'll let the council know we're moving this up. All right, councilors, I'm going to move the budget up for everybody before the national grid public hearing because Councilor McDonald and Amanda, it's been a little dicey with this technology, so we're going to move it up so they can vote. And that way if something happens, because Carrie is at a conference and may not be able to stay the entire duration anyways. He's in Portland, which is three hours behind, so. You hear me? I'm going to move the budget up. I know, but I want to make sure that Barbara knows. That's at nine, let's go. All rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, our servicemen and women, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you. Clerk will call the roll. Oh, we lost Zoom. For those in the audience, we are trying to use technology. We had two councils who had previous engagements for work. And this is the challenge with using technology. We lost them. Be with me one second. So in preparation of today's meeting, you can see the technology challenge. So we are going to be moving the budget up for those here who want to... Any questions or comments on the budget? We do have public comment. They are back. We lost you, Councilor Lindhane and Councilor McDonald for a minute. We're going to be moving that up in the agenda to before the public comment for national grid. So just be aware, we are making a little bit of a change to the docket to accommodate two councils that have previous engagements for the budgetary vote. Clerk, did you call the roll?
I will.
Cologne Hayes. Condon. Crowe. Lindhane.
Here.
McDonald.
Here.
Murphy. O'Malley. Sika.
Here.
Simonelli. Winslow. Spatafor. Spatafor here. Under the provisions of the open meeting law, for those in attendance, please be informed that UMA, Urban Meteorites, formerly known as More Than Access TV, were recording this evening's meeting. We also are streaming this via Zoom, as you could tell, but also for the general public. So be aware, there'll be audio and video recording of this meeting. First order of business, public comment. So I know, I believe we have how many?
There's four people that signed up and there's five emails.
Okay, just to remind everybody, we do have four people. Public comment is allowed under the council rules. Each speaker is limited just to subject matter on the docket, which we know that. And it's up to two minutes. Not going to time anybody, just be just confident or just be aware that there is a two-minute rule. Not going to stop any mid-flight, there's only four, but just want to recognize that for... You done waving, council? It's called Zoom. All right. Clerk Lucy, you want to invite the first person up on the list?
Kathleen Sullivan.
Kathleen, I know you all, we know you, but just I know you put your name and address. Just say your name and address for the record, please. Thank you. Wait, 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 Kathleen, I just got to turn the mic on. Give me one second, I apologize. There you go.
My name is Kathleen Sullivan. I live at 27 Oliver Street, and I'm representing the Friends of Roosevelt Park tonight. I'm going to be reading parts of a letter sent today from the Community Preservation Committee to the mayor and the city council concerning the contamination at Roosevelt Park. Dear Honorable Mayor and esteemed councilors, as you may be aware, since 2019 when the Community Preservation Committee approved a bond for 1.45 million for the Roosevelt Park rehabilitation project, a significant amount of the contaminated soil has been discovered throughout the entire site. Roosevelt's location next to the K-8 Salemwood School significantly raises the gravity of this situation. As currently scoped, the approved project planned for mitigation of contaminated soil from a majority of the site removes contaminated soil only to the level acceptable for the covering of synthetic turf carpet. The CPC does not have the ability to revise a council-approved project. Therefore, over the past year, we have sent multiple requests to the MRA, OCPCD, and the city council to request that they change the scope of the original project to include the mitigation of contaminated soil at the site to the depth accessible acceptable for landscaping. We were informed by the MRA OSPCD applicants that they don't have the authority to make changes to the approved project unless directed by city officials. As such, the CPC would like to respectfully request that the current city council and mayor Christensen consider directing the MRA to depart from the originally approved Roosevelt Park rehabilitation project and revise it to include a plan for the mitigation of contaminated soil from the entire site, allowing for the soil to remain free from a permanent cover and acceptable for landscaping. Synthetic turf has a limited lifespan and will be periodically replaced at a considerable cost. A long view solution would be to use the CPA funds we have available today for the removal of contaminated soil from the entire site. This is a solution that will allow future generations to use the site for whatever their needs may be, with no concern for the dangers associated with contaminated soil while funding is available. Please let us know if the CPC can provide other information to facilitate a change in the scope of work for Roosevelt Park to include a plan for mitigation of the contaminated soil from the entire site. Best regards, Lisa Saldas, CPC Chairperson. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, next.
Laura Thompson.
Hi Laura, how you doing? Just same thing, name and address for the record, so we have it. Please, thank you.
My name is Laura Thompson, and I live at 53 Placestead Road. And I'll just read my statement. Dear esteemed councilors, green space from small neighborhood parks like Roosevelt Park provides health, social, and environmental benefit to the neighbors that live around it and to the students of the Salemwood School. Roosevelt Park offers opportunities for physical activity for children, adults, and families. It offers a place for social engagement within the neighborhood, a place where we can come together as a community. The natural and cultivated space of the park provide a habitat for wildlife, serve important biological functions that purify air and water, plants and vegetation heal the earth of toxic pollutants, lower ambient air temperatures, and absorb rainfall to reduce flooding in the neighborhoods surrounding the park. Currently Roosevelt Park is contaminated with lead. The lead was identified in 2019 and remains in the soil today. This is the same soil that children from the Salemwood School play on every day. This is the same soil that we see the community assuming we could trust with our children, our pets, and even ourselves. The lack of action regarding the cleanup of the contamination and the lack of meaningful communication by the City of Malden regarding the contamination has bruised the trust between the City of Malden and the neighbors surrounding the park and the parents of the students of the Salemwood School. The Malden Ward Five city councillor elected to represent our neighborhood was part of the implementation of improvements for Roosevelt Park from the start. She never reached out to the Roosevelt Park neighbors or the parents of the students of the Salemwood School for their meaningful involvement in the development of improvements for Roosevelt Park. The neighbors of Roosevelt Park and the parents of the students of the Salemwood School were not identified as stakeholders in the improvement project, and our Ward Five city councillor did not act as our representative. The Roosevelt Park community and the parents of the Salemwood School students would like to respectfully stress how important it is the lead is removed at once and completely go down in the dirt to a depth of three feet. Replace the soil, the contaminated soil with clean soil and cover it with natural grass. This is what the Roosevelt Park neighborhood families and the parents of the Salemwood School students want. Every other City of Malden improvement project has had heavy local meaningful community involvement and fair treatment. The Roosevelt Park neighbors and the parents of the Salemwood School students respectfully call for equitable treatment by the Malden City Government and its officials in its decision-making process regarding Roosevelt Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one?
Lisette Alvarado.
Hi, good evening, everyone. First of all, I wanted to say thank you, Councilor Spatafor, for putting this on the docket today so that we could speak during public comment time too. So I appreciate that. I just wanted to say, people have asked me why I am involved at the Friends of Roosevelt Park. I do not live near Roosevelt Park. I'm a Ward Two resident. And I just wanted to give... And I just wanted to give a personal story about how this affects more than just the people from Ward Five. My son, my five-year-old son is autistic, and we live near the BB school. But he will be in an intensive learning classroom next year. The BB school does not offer those types of special ed classrooms to special ed students. They only offer inclusive classrooms, so this is a separate classroom he will be placed in. The schools that do offer it are Linden, Salemwood, and Forestale. And when I hear Salemwood, after knowing everything I know, that is added on to the fear and stress of sending a special needs child to kindergarten. We all know that it's already stressful as it is when you send a little kid over to kindergarten to a new place. But knowing that that field has a level of lead contamination across it is very fearful to parents, because that field is not only used by small children, it's used by the community. It's not just a field for sports, it is a field for babies hanging out on there, for parents taking a stroll at night, for, you know, kids doing pickup games or doing free play on there. And that level, that very thin level of soil that supposedly protects everyone from this lead contamination, won't protect my son. He is not that type of quiet autistic child. He's a seeker, he's a runner, he's a climber, he's that person who will be digging in that dirt. And he's that one who smells everything on his hands, puts his hands in his mouth, and that's typical for kindergartners, that's typical for little kids. And so, the contamination is a very real issue. It is something that does affect all of us in Malden, not just the people from that one ward. Because I'm a Ward Two resident, but I could be going to Salemwood School next year with my child. And my worry is that he will be the first one sticking his hands in his mouth with that contaminated soil on it. Because there is a high concentrated section of contamination there on the field, but there's lead literally across the entire field that is supposedly acceptable levels. We all know that there are no acceptable levels of lead. So, I do ask that you please vote to hear from us next week so that we could talk a little bit more about this contamination, because it'd be great to have this conversation. It'd be great to talk further about it, because it's something that I don't think has, that families who attend Salemwood School or who could be possibly attending Salemwood School know about this, that there's lead on this field, or that the Salemwood neighborhood knows that there's lead on this field. So, thank you for having us tonight, and I really do hope that you vote to hear us next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Stephen South. Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Stephen South, and I'm the Secretary Treasurer of Teamsters Local 25.
I just need an address, too, Stephen, just for the record, too.
Excuse me?
I just need a name and address for the record.
Stephen South, 106 Damon Road, Medford, Massachusetts.
Thank you, Stephen, appreciate it.
Teamsters Local 25 is the largest local union in New England. We represent over 300 cities and towns and companies, approximately 12,000 members. Including now, we've organized several bargaining units within the City of Malden. We're very happy about that. Malden is a great city, you guys are really doing a lot of great things, and I'm happy to be here and look forward to working with all of you, as well as the mayor and his administration. So, I wanted to introduce myself first, but also, I wanted to show up tonight because it was brought to my attention that one of the councilors was questioning the legality of some of the employees within the city being able to join the union. So, I wanted to address that, and I know that the department heads have sent a letter to the city clerk and the administration regarding the same, but I just wanted to share a couple of things with all of you. So, first of all, employees in the United States, specifically in Massachusetts, have the right to join the union of their choice without fear of retribution or any kind of discrimination. And the employees that are right here in the audience have done that, as well as other bargaining units. Also, during the process in which these employees joined the union, the city had outside counsel as well as administration officials at all the meetings and attended and also came to an agreement on voluntary recognition. And I also, if any of you haven't seen it, I have a copy that I'd be more than happy to share with you. So, the city was well represented. Third, that after the voluntary recognition was signed, it was sent to the Massachusetts Department of Labor Relations. And that's the department that's in charge of all things organizing in the state of Massachusetts. And the department found the petition to be legal and correct and proper, and therefore certified that, hence making these employees union, meaning the department heads. And the last thing I wanted to point out to anyone that may try to dispute or contest the fact that any of the employees are organizing, specifically the department heads, is many communities within Massachusetts have department heads and assistant department heads that are union, and including several of your neighbors. Medford department heads and assistant department heads are Teamsters. Woburn department heads and assistant department heads are Teamsters, and I organized them back in 2006. And they've been so ever since. And there's other neighbors that you have, like Revere, that are, the department heads are organized but are in a different union. So, I just wanted to point that out, that this is not unprecedented or unique. And so, with that, I don't want anybody in this community to feel as if they're being ostracized for joining the union. And most importantly, Teamsters Local 25 is organizing four additional bargaining units right now, in addition to the three that we already represent. So, in closing, Teamsters Local 25 and myself, we stand with the department heads and all the employees in the City of Malden, and I hope that you all do, too, and I thank you for your time and kind attention.
Thank you, sir. Next clerk.
Okay, we have five letters, five emails that I received. First one. I would like to thank Mayor Christensen and city council for the opportunity to comment on the submitted 2023 budget. While I am happy to hear the budget presented is balanced, and it looks like our debt service will soon be on its way down, I was disappointed by the underfunding of our public living assets. The line item for DPW tree plantings at $25,000 seems extremely low for the city the size of Malden. Even if Malden is no longer designated as a tree city, which would require $2 per capita to be spent on urban forestry, if we consider $1 per capita, that line item should be closer to $67,000 for a city with a population of 67,000. Malden's urban tree canopy is one of the most important assets we have in mitigating the severe impacts of ongoing climate change and the disasters it presents in the form of wind damage, flooding, and drought. I strongly urge Mayor Christensen and city council to consider increasing the money allocated to the planting and care of our living public assets. I would also like to suggest that the mayor and city council strongly consider the creation of an urban forestry parks commission consisting of an experienced certified arborist, a senior urban forestry landscape planner, and multiple residents with complementary backgrounds to oversee planting policies for all public spaces and to apply for another grants, other grants to maintain, increase, and improve our green space assets. It is time for Malden to recognize public shade trees and our urban forestry canopy as the assets of the city and our environment that they are, properly funding these assets as a start. Thank you for all you do for our city. Lisa Saldas, 67 National Street, Malden. Dear Clerk Lucy, please accept the following public commentary for the city council 621-22 agenda. Dear city council, I'm writing in support of Resolution 307-22 to support Laura Thompson speaking to the council regarding contaminations of the fenced-off area at Roosevelt Park. The council will likely revisit the project to review, one, the city's bonding of the project, and, two, the CPC's renewed request for the city council and may it revise scope of work. Because of that, it would be beneficial for the current council to be refreshed on what the community has learned since additional contamination was discovered in 2019 over and above what was already known. Regards, John Seah, Ward Five. We, the undersigned City of Malden department heads, stand united in exercising our right to organize and be represented by Teamsters Local 25. This great city has made so much progress over the past 10 years, and even brighter days are ahead. We, as a group, are proud to have played a critical role in the progress and remain committed to making tomorrow even better than today. Like so many of our residents and other city employees, as well as department heads in other cities, we chose to organize to secure our futures. The right to organize is a fundamental one. Our organizing effort has been certified by the state of Massachusetts Labor Board in the same way all other prior organizing efforts have been. That this effort has been singled out for questioning is at best disappointing. We are in agreement as a group and appreciating that we enjoy a great working relationship with the mayor and his administration. It is through the mayor's biweekly department head meetings and his ability to lead even those over whom he has no appointing authority that we have remained united and high performing as a group. We have a relationship built on longstanding trust, respect, and professional dedication, and appreciate that the mayor has recognized our right to organize. We ask that the city council treat our efforts to organize with the same respect as with all other past efforts by those city unions already recognized. We stand together, excited for the future of Malden, and proud to be members of Teamsters Local 25. Deborah Burke, Nathan Kramer, Ronald Hogan, Gregory Lucy, Joseph Levine, Kathy McMullin, Anthony Rodriguez, Chris Webb, James Cahill, Dan Grover, Yem Lip, Kevin Jarvis, Nelson Miller, Mike Neil Paul, Eric Rubin. Dear city council, I would like to state my strong support for the resolve before you tonight relating to the Friends of Roosevelt Park. The Friends of Roosevelt Park and their representatives is extremely knowledgeable about Roosevelt Park and proven project. I anticipate the information and viewpoints they share will help council deliberations and better inform residents. I ask that you vote unanimously to support this community presentation by Friends of Roosevelt Park at next week's council meeting. Thank you sincerely, Brian, 1 Lacy, 1 Earl Street. And finally, dear city council, I would like to state my strong support for the resolve before you tonight relating to the Friends of Roosevelt Park. I ask that you vote unanimously to support the community presentation by Friends of Roosevelt Park at this council meeting. Please change the narrative of blatant environmental racism that is at play here. Please follow the data as it clearly informs us as to what decisions need to be made here tonight. Please rescind the bond, remediate the contaminated soil, and create a new design with the people of Roosevelt Park. All Maldonians deserve to have green space in their communities. Thank you, Erga Parret, 93 Oliver Street, Malden.
Is that it, Mr. Clerk? Okay, let me just get my bearings. Council's remote, you still there, right? Thumbs up? Okay. Next order of business is appointments and elections. How many minutes?
We got Paper 301-22, minutes of the meeting of June 7th, and Paper 302-22, minutes of the meeting of June 14th.
Okay, I heard Council Simonelli made a motion. Let me get my screen back up here. Council Simonelli made a motion to approve both the minutes of meeting of June 7th, 2022, and June 14th, seconded by Council Winslow, I heard. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
Oh, we gotta do roll call, we're in Zoom, sorry. Actually, I'm not sorry. Thank Carrie and Council Linehan. Roll call, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes. Roll call. Condon. Crowe. Linehan.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy. O'Malley. Sika. Simonelli. Winslow. Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Thank you, everybody. Next order of business. Sorry, clerk, I know you.
Paper 303-22, Mayor Earl appointment. Helena Clark, 39 Akon Street, as a member of the license board, said term to commence upon confirmation by the city council and to expire on June 1st, 2028, to fill the vacancy of Frances Lynn, who has stepped down from the board.
Council Simonelli's motion to refer to committee, seconded by counsel by Council Murphy. Clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes. Condon. Crowe. Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy. O'Malley. Sika. Simonelli. Winslow. Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Refer to committee. So, next order of business, we are going to skip the public hearing for, we're going to jump down to the budget. Again, we're doing this for those people watching on TV in Zoom. We do have two councils that are remote for prior agreements, and so we have had a little technology trouble already, and I want to make sure that both councils have the ability to vote on this year's budget and have any discussion points they want to reiterate to the council. So, clerk, if you could go to that section of your docket and read the budget.
Committee report, the standard committee on finance, the one was referred, Paper 236-22. Having considered the same, make the following report of the annual appropriation for fiscal 2023, and that was amended in committee.
Come on, Councilor, I want to make sure everybody can hear, especially the ones who are not here. Council Murphy?
Mr. Lucy, did you want to read the rest of it?
There was some amendments to the proposed budget. It was, there was five different things that was added by the mayors. Renamed 4th of July to celebrations, and increased by $8,000. Increased city council by $27,500. Increased mayor's office by $25,000. Increased traffic department by $40,000. Increased teen center by $10,000. And to support the above amendments, increase the use of free cash by $110,500.
Council Murphy for the committee report.
Motion received, the committee report.
Council Murphy's motion received, the committee report. Clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes. Condon. Crowe. Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley. Sika. Simonelli. Winslow. Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Council Murphy for the committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, the budget came down to us on May 14th, and since then, we've been going through it page by page. We've had a number of the department heads in to discuss the budget needs for the departments to make sure that everyone is adequately funded. The school department has been in before us, they were in last week. They represent a very large portion of the budget. Everyone is comfortable with their numbers, you know, with every year. Sometimes you have to take a hard look at things, and not everyone gets everything that they want, but I think the majority of folks have walked away happy with the budget as it was submitted. During the conversations, we did find a couple of areas that we, as the Finance Committee, wanted to tweak. Last week, we sent them up to the mayor. He came back, negotiated a little bit, but today, in the council meeting, the Finance Committee meeting, we agreed with those changes, and we voted unanimously to bring the amended budget fiscal year 2023 appropriation to the floor. Council O'Malley, would you like me to read them again? Do you have them? Okay.
I want to be cognizant, we do have two councils that are remote, and if the mics aren't on, certainly don't mind people speaking, I just want to make sure I've got a mic so they can understand us at home.
Yes, so, I know that Counselor McDonald had specifically, Counselor McDonald, if you don't have the paper in front of you, he would specifically requested $10,000 be added to the teen center, that was granted by the mayor. So, that was good. We also increased the traffic commission budget by $40,000 to help fill requests that are made by councilors and residents when they go to the traffic commission asking for changes such as barriers or speed signs, things like that. So, that budget was increased from $10,000 to $40,000, which will really be helpful, I think, to the entire city from a safety perspective. And then we have some training issues and 4th of July issues. So, all in all, I think it was, you know, the end result of the work that we've taken over the last six weeks has been good. So, I would look for a favorable vote to adopt the 2023 appropriation.
Before I entertain any lights on committee, Counsel McDonald, Counsel Linehan- Lenihan, uh, if you have any comments, you want to speak, I want to get to you, to both of yous first, being remote and knowing there's some technology challenges on your side. So I don't have the ability to see if, I, I can barely see the screen as it is, but uh, I don't know if you, I don't see your hands up. Are your hands up, Counsel? Okay, Counsel, oh, now I see a virtual hand and I see a physical hand, so that's good. So I will go with Counsel Lenihan first, and then I'll go to Counsel McDonald. So floor is yours, Counsel Lenihan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank, um, both the mayor and the committee for working to integrate that traffic increase. Um, I know that's something that will mean a lot to constituents and we had a great discussion about in committee, so just wanted to acknowledge that and say thanks for that. That'll go a long way, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel McDonald.
Yeah, thank you. I want to echo Counsel Lenihan's appreciation for the work of the Finance Committee and Chair Murphy and CFO Ranigan and everyone who was involved in this process. I thought we just had a really good set of discussions this year and great opportunity to talk with our department heads, especially those of the largest budgets, including our school system. And I appreciate that the mayor included an increase to the teen center. I do think that our teens are, um, it's just such a hard time for teenagers and youth coming out of the pandemic, a lot of mental health and well-being challenges, and so being able to invest in our youth is an essential thing for our community in the coming year. So I really appreciate that. It is one of the recommendations that was, um, at the top of the list, requested by our People's Budget Process this year, so thanks to folks who took that survey and put that forward. And I will be pleased to support the, the budget this year for the city. And I thank you, Council President, to making sure that we are able to join this essential vote from afar. I appreciate that.
Understood. Thank you. Okay, now I will go on, uh, committee that are here. Counsel O'Malley was first.
Uh, thank you, Council President, and I do appreciate that, that some of these changes were, were made. Um, I think that, you know, one of the concerns that I do have, um, it's kind of related to the, to the other, um, papers I have on the agenda. One specifically related to the communication coming from the mayor's office to the city council, um, and any budget implications that some of the decisions that are being made in the mayor's office will have on our city budget. Uh, you know, usually budgeting time is when we have those long-term strategic discussions. We had a whole committee set up by Counsel President Spatafora, but the trend that I've noticed is that there are a lot of surprises coming out of the mayor's office, and we're not, we're not being proactively brought into the loop of what is going on. It makes it difficult for me to support a budget when that is the type of communication that's occurring. I, I hope that communication does improve. I mean, we've had a lot of protests going on outside of City Hall. We've had students here, week after week. We've had teachers here, week after week. It's important that those type of communications come to us. I'm finding out about things on Facebook. I'm finding out about things in the newspaper. Those are not the ways that a co-equal branch of government should be finding out about things. Not because I want to make it a political issue, but because when I have residents come to me offline and say, "Hey, did you hear about this latest scandal?", and I say, "No", it doesn't make us look good. And all I'm saying is, communication is very helpful, and I don't want to be finding out about major strategic things that have happened upwards of four months ago on Facebook. Uh, it makes it difficult for me to, to really support the budget this year. The things going on in the school department right now, and where our schools are trending since I've been on the council, these are the things that I want to hear from the mayor on directly, whether it is a, a, an email, or a letter, or executive session, or a public post. It's really important for, for me personally to, to hear those news, that news directly from the source, because I don't know if I can trust what I read on Facebook, but I want to be able to intelligently speak to my residents when they're concerned about the direction the community is going. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Winslow.
Yeah, no, I really want to thank, um, all the city staff, department heads who came in, uh, Controller Ranigan and, uh, Mr. Hogan and everybody who worked on the budget. Um, sitting on the Finance Committee, I think we had all very thorough discussions. So it was a challenge, and I think we, we do have some, some great additions in terms of like achieving, um, things in our police department, some, some training and mental health training. You know, the school department, um, adding some counseling services and, um, helping the school department to realign some, um, ELL programs so that they're across the city. Um, you know, I think, uh, you know, I think we're encouraged, I know the question came up about trees. Um, you know, we do, uh, we're on the track to have a certified arteris, Chris Rosa, be our tree award, in which we'll open up grant opportunities that we can use that money we do dedicate, and, and now that we have a plan to have more award improvement money, uh, we can all dedicate some of that to trees if we'd like. So, uh, I'm very supportive, and I appreciate the, the lead Counsel Murphy did, and, uh, you know, working with the mayor on the, um, you know, the additional requests we had, and I think those are all fair. And I, I think also the other thing, as we, we asked each department about, uh, you know, fuel prices are up, and we've anticipated, uh, that as best we can, so, um, so I think we're trying to, uh, you know, anticipate things, and, and we're also making very wise use of, uh, the, the federal resources that have come down the past few years to make sure that, um, we are, um, you know, improving, um, our equipment and, and taking care of what we need in those short-term money, but not building too much into the, um, the long-term budget, uh, when that money goes away. So I, I think it was a very thorough process, and I am supportive of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Siminelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I just want to say too, that I'm in favor of the budget. I, you know, I've had the opportunity to, uh, sit in on Counsel Murphy, uh, Chairman of the Finance Committee, her committee, and, and listen to some things on the committee. I thought it was done very, very comprehensive. You, you had a very good plan, you broke it all down, the mayor's office, all, you know, Chuck Ranigan, Ron, uh, Ron Hogan. I mean, you know, I, I think that, for me, I've, you know, I've been here before, 10 years prior, and, uh, it was one of the easiest budget times and, and most knowledgeable budget times, because the way it was broken down, uh, for, for me so far. So I just like to say, I just think everybody has done a great job on putting this budget together. Um, you know, the budget is the budget, you know? Chuck Ranigan, uh, did a great job from his office with this, with the, with the budget procedure. Anytime I had a question, I would call, go up to his office, any, any, I mean, he'd stop what he was doing, explain things to me, you know, because, you know, I'm not, you know, a knowledge of all, you know, and it is some things I don't understand, and, uh, you know, and I don't try and micromanage for my position. And I, I just want to say, I, you know, if I, I've had questions and they were, they were answered. Uh, also, you know, Marie Louise, who's sitting out here today, anytime I have an issue or a problem, I call her up, you know, either I get her immediately, or she calls me right back within five minutes. Um, so, you know, it's not an easy task, uh, to put this budget together. Everybody wants something. You only have so much money. Everyone thinks that, you know, $180 million to run the city is, uh, you know, is for the taking. It's not. By the time you're done with police, fire, teachers, DPW, City Hall, you're, you're left with a real small piece of the pie, and then you have 11 city councils up here trying to get a piece of that, too. So it's, it's not, it's not an easy task. And to, I don't know, I know, I don't want to talk when he's not here, but, uh, Counsel O'Malley, I mean, you know, it's a, it's a tough job, uh, to do what you're doing. It's a tough job for the council to do what they're doing. And, you know, uh, you always can reach out to other people yourself, too. Uh, you can pick up the phone, go see a department head. You need to do your due diligence as a city counselor, and, uh, can't expect other people to, uh, do your job. So I'm for the budget. I think they've done a fantastic job here, and, uh, oh, another thing I want to say was about trees. I think we got a, we just got a grant for 2,500 trees, which is wonderful. Uh, I'm getting 2,400, and you guys are gonna split the rest. No, I'm playing. But we have, we have a.
We might need a fact check on that, Counsel. I don't know if that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right, DCR just gave us a grant for like 2,500 trees, so.
I think it's $2,500, but we'll move forward.
No, it's 2,500 trees. $2,500 is what you're giving me for the award improvement fund, but, I gotcha. So anyway, I just want to say thank you, and, uh, you know, I know Counsel Winslow over here is working really hard on, on doing things with trees and green space, so, uh, we're on the right track. Thank you, Mr. President, for your cooperation.
All right, thank you. Anybody else on com, committee? Is your light on, Counsel? There you go, Counsel Condon.
I will not be too long, but, uh, Barbara Murphy was the chairman of finance, and, uh, the members were diligent, showing up and participating. I think we took everything into consideration, and over the years, the budget has been slashed and looked at, line item by line item, and I know Chuck Ranigan, uh, doesn't miss much, neither does that entire team, Ron Hogan, uh, the treasurer, so they deserve our thanks. Anybody can vote against something, but you'd like to hear legitimate reasons why. But, uh, I will support this budget. Thank Barbara for doing a good job, uh, and, uh, like I said, I'll look forward to vote for this.
Okay, any other questions on committee?
Counsel Spat, Counsel President, I do want to say something.
Okay, Counsel Murphy, your light's already on, so it's fine.
I'm just waiting for you to say, okay. Um, I did want to, um, tell the general public or anyone who's listening now or may listen when the MATV tape is rerun, um, that our budgets are online, both the city budget and the school department budget. They have been online since, um, well, at least the, uh, the city department budget has been online since the day the budget was sent down to the city council. Um, it's very easy to use. Couple of years ago, uh, under the direction of, uh, Controller, um, CFO Ranigan, we went to a new application, ClearGov, um, and it's very user-friendly, so anyone in the city can go out there and look at every line item that is in the budget. The school department budget is also out there. Um, I don't have our budget with us, but I do have, just to hold it up, the school department budget, as you can see, it's quite thick, so it does take a, a little reading, uh, you know, to, to get through it, but, you know, if anyone has any questions, I would, you know, really advise them, um, to go out and kind of scroll through the budget and just see what's, how it's put together. There's a tremendous amount of information out there, it's not just numbers. Talks about the, um, individual departments, who's in them, what their objectives are, what their goals are, um, any, um, you know, challenges that they might face. So it really is a living document, um, that would give the reader a very good idea of the working of the city. So, you know, I would just suggest that you do that, and it can be found on the city website. And I want to thank the Finance Committee for all their hard work and for diligently showing up to every meeting, and also, um, the financial team, Mr. Ranigan, Mr. Hogan, Marie Louise, the mayor, et cetera, and also the superintendent. Superintendent was in twice over the past couple of weeks, um, you know, with a wonderful presentation, and we got to hear a lot from her about changes she was making in the school system to make, um, the system better, and we look forward to working with her as, um, the year goes on. So, thank you, I appreciate your support of the budget, and I would move to adopt.
Okay, can I speak?
Yes, the appropriation, yes.
Then I will. Anybody else who want to get ready, okay? Uh, I just want to, you know, echo some of the words I think my fellow councils have said, uh, in terms of, uh, the prepar, preparation of this budget. Uh, Counsel Murphy did a great job, but also recognizing that Charles Ranigan, the CFO, not the controller anymore, the CFO, as well as Ron Hogan, uh, and all the department heads, this was really, it is really a living and breathing, uh, document, as well as the entire finance team. I didn't attend any meetings by design, I mentioned that earlier, but I know there's a lot of great questions. Counsel McDonald, I do see a hand, I'll get to you right after this, if that's okay. Um, a lot of great questions, a lot of good input, um, but I think some of the councils have summarized, uh, while the council has the ability, we can always, we can never just add, we have to balance the budget, uh, and there is not a big buck, you know, bucket of money where most people think that we can change. It's probably less than 5% of the budget, I think, that really is an earmark, uh, for certain things. But that being said, I think this council, specifically the finance team here, using ClearGov, that software, has made it much more transparent, much more easier for the residents to understand the budget, as well as, um, well, I shouldn't say easier for the residents. It is a, it is a daunting task, even if you look at a school budget today, uh, some of the terminology and the verbiage in there and the grants, but the ability now for residents to go in there and, and pretty quickly, um, graph it out, and then allowing, and then allowing, this year, Counsel Murphy hit upon it, the budget, the, the directors to put in their wants and wishes to build a budget. Uh, and I don't mean to be this, say this in a very disparaging way, uh, but this is how most budgets are run in real organizations, meaning private, you know, private and nonprofits that have large budgets, that you go to the, 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 the individual business units and ask them what they request, what they can afford to give at the beginning of the year, and then we have, you know, in my business, we have quarterly updates to make sure we're going, uh, further. So, um, we're getting there, we are certainly not, uh, the place I think everybody in this committee and in the finance team wants to get, uh, and Counsel O'Malley mentioned, you know, the, the long-term strategy play, that committee that I started this year. That is something I hope that meets during the summer and does not go away, and now can dig into some of the, I say, issues or long-term problems that not affected by, on an, in the annual basis, but certainly will have impact in future budgets. So I will support this budget. I want to thank the entire council, as well as, uh, Counsel Murphy, Chairman, the finance team, as well as, uh, the Finance Committee, uh, councilors. I do have a couple lights. Counsel, uh, McDonald first, and then Counsel Condon. He's tapping on my glass. Counsel, uh, Counsel McDonald, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, one other thing I wanted to call attention to in this budget that we didn't discuss in committee is the budget for the Malden Public Library. Uh, I want to recognize that there's an increase in the library's budget that's going to allow the city to get beyond the state-required waiver that we've been needing to submit due to low, um, being below some of the state-required thresholds, uh, and that's really important because the clock, the clock was ticking on that, so that was something that I and I'm sure others advocated for behind the scenes, and I just want to appreciate, um, that the mayor has included an increase that'll get us over that minimum funding threshold, so we don't, uh, we get out of waiver territory for the Malden Public Library, uh, this year, because the library absolutely needs our investment and support. Thank you.
Great call, Counsel McDonald. Uh, before I send to Counsel Condon, I know Greg Lucy sits on that library committee, uh, as well as the chair, the council president sits as the de facto seat, uh, in that meeting I went to this year, that was the, the topic for 20 minutes, and, uh, Dora, I said, "Dora, you're still trying to get that money?", and it was short dollars, but had a big profound impact. So, uh, I too had a discussion with the mayor about it, too, and I think, uh, I think the tag teaming with us and the finance team, uh, brought a long way, but great to recognize that, that impactful money, and I'm sure Dora is, was thrilled, she will be thrilled once we pass this, so, uh, great catch there, Counsel. Counsel Condon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, it was mentioned, uh, I don't know how it got mentioned in the budget, but, uh, we have the mayor's top person, Marie Louise, who comes to every single council meet, every single one. So I've served under, well, four mayors, and I've never seen one have to be put under that kind of pressure. The, the, the information that was sent to us just on the COVID, every week, updates, we knew exactly what was going on. So I just think it's unfair that it was even mentioned. I, I'm not sure why it was mentioned, but, you know, a simple phone call to Maria, she's always available, she can give you any information that, uh, you're asking for. So I, I just hate to see, uh, the mayor dragged under the bus when he doesn't deserve it, because I've never seen the mayor's top executive person come to almost every single meeting, every single meeting, and give us so much information. So I don't think, I don't understand this. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna get to that, let's just keep it on the budget, we want to get past this, because I know some councils might have to jump because of some technology issues. Counsel Hayes.
Uh, thank you.
Counsel Karen Cologne Hayes, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, so I just wanted to say that it was my first year on the Budget Committee, and I and I want to thank everyone for answering. Counselor Murphy answered all my questions I would call. And so I just want to thank you for that. But also, I have been a part of the process from the other end, so it was nice to see it from the council end. I've come to every council meeting also for like, I think, maybe 15 years. So it was, and working for the city. But it definitely was an eye-opener and really interesting to see it from the city council side. And just wanted to say I'm in support of the budget, and, you know, I'm glad that we got to work together.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, Counselor Murphy has a motion.
Motion.
Okay, hold on. Motion to pass the budget as amended, as amended.
To adopt the budget as amended.
As amended, seconded by Council Seminelli. The clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley. Seika.
Yes.
Seminelli. Winslow. Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Motion carries. Eleven to zero. I'm going to go back to the top of the docket. Thank you, counselors. I think Council Linehan is going to jump from technology challenge. Thank you, Counselor. I am going to go back to the beginning of the agenda for those following along. We are in section eight, which is hearings, petition, and memorials. And it's a public hearing for National Grid. Clerk, they're not here, but clerk, I want you to read it. Yeah, let him read it, and then we'll go forward.
Paper 304-22, petition, Boston Gas, DBA, National Grid, Forty Sylvan Road, Wallfair, Mass., W O. number 90000144172-180-182, Lebanon Street, to install a new gas regulator station on Lebanon Street to replace an existing regulator station on Garden Street. Hearing required. Counsel Winslow for the, for the hearing, the paper.
Are you on, Counsel? Hold on a second. Yeah, there we go. Yeah, I did have the opportunity to meet National Grid on site, and I did have some comments. They were not aware of the hearing tonight, so I am, just contacted them during the meeting. They would be available next week.
Okay.
So I don't know if we want to open up the hearing, whether that, we should do that and then.
They're not here. That's the problem. I think, do they, do they have to be for the hearing?
Right. Right. So we may want to open up the hearing and then.
And then table it.
Table, yeah, as that. So we should do that.
Understood. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So we're going to table this. So for the, for the general public out there watching, for the rest of the councils, if anybody's watching, lives in this area, they have any questions. We are going to, usually the petitioner comes in, they did speak to the ward council, Counsel Winslow. I know he does his due diligence. So we'll open up the public hearing.
Right. I mean, we could ask any attendees, if they have comments or whatever.
Yeah, I'll ask any attendees, and then we'll, we'll make a motion to table, and that way it's still open. So any, well, there's one council left. So Council McDonald, do you have any questions on the petition? If he does not, Counselor Mc, Counsel, Counselor Murphy?
Yes. The only thing that I would think, say that we should think about is, if you remember the last time we tabled something, and then we didn't tell, notify the butters that it was tabled and we were hearing it the next week.
Oh, I do.
We had a crowd in here. So I'm not sure how that will work, because it was definitely a problem when we did this the last time.
I mean, I think that was a little bit different, because there was a representation, I think, that we were not, that, that, that there was not, that was not going to continue. So I think that was the type of thing. I, you know, I guess I think we, if people are ready to have the hearing and come and comment, they could comment tonight.
Okay.
And then we can, like I say, if any of the attendees want to comment, I think we could have them speak tonight.
Okay.
But the people have had the notice. We, I think what happened, you know, on the one hearing, was that there was representation that, that, that there was not going to be any more hearings. So I don't think there's been any representation. I haven't made any representation to any of the butters. I did national, asked National Grid that they were notifying butters as necessary, and I believe that's all happened. So I think if we open up the hearing, if there are any of the attendees who want to speak, you know, then, then we can go there. But, you know, I haven't been contacted by any of the neighbors. So, so yeah, I, I, I think it is somewhat a different situation. So, but I mean, certainly if there's attendees, we should make sure that they have the opportunity to speak, and then people could, you know, I'm not asking that the hearing be closed tonight, that we would keep it open.
Table it, yep.
And then, then people could come and speak next week. But I think anybody who's that interested has had the opportunity, they could be here tonight. And so we're not, we're not, you know, if anybody's here tonight to speak on that, we will also have the hearing. But, you know, I think we can go ahead and take any comments and then, then go. I think that's fine. I think there was a misrepresentation, that one, right, that people shouldn't bother, because it wasn't going to happen. So I think that was a misrepresentation.
Okay, Counsel, Council O'Malley.
I agree with Counsel Winslow. I think we, for and against, table it the next time, for and against. I feel for the clerk's office. I don't think they need to re-flyer everyone. I think that the real issue in that one was the fact that in committee, it looked as though that that was dead in the water. And so they had a false sense of hope that that wasn't going to be an issue they needed to pay attention to. And the additional issue is that the assessor's office was not including the address closest to the pole. So that was like a perfect storm of a situation. I'm going to defer to the, to the ward counselor. It sounds like this is not as big of a controversial issue. It's a gas infrastructure that we definitely want to be updated. So I don't see it, I don't see us saying no to this. But whatever you think needs to be tweaked on the site, I'm going to go with what you say. That's my opinion.
There you go, Counsel. Counsel Winslow, give your light on again. Do you want to speak again, or did you hit it by mistake? Okay. All right. So I did speak to the clerk through the glass. They have been notified. So that, to the, kind of the Counsel Winslow's point, they have been notified. If anybody was concerned, they can come here. We will table to allow anybody else who's maybe watching this or listening to it, or social media has the ability next week to come back and give us any pros and cons, as well as the clerk did say, even if we wanted to repost this, we don't have time to do the mailings considering today's Tuesday, and they probably would not get it in time for the, for the meeting anyways for next week. So I think that, I'll take Counsel Winslow's lead and his ward. We will open up the public hearing, ask for any questions. We will close the public hearing for. We will open up against, we will close it, and then we will table, we will table before, I will actually table the public hearing before I close it. So, excuse me, I will just table it, not close it, rather. Excuse me. Have we understood? Okay. So I would like to open up the public hearing on petition. Did you read it, Counsel? And clerk? You read. I'd like to open up the public hearing for National Grid for Forty Sylvan, that's what it's addressed, which is 180, 182 Lebanon Street, to install a new gas regulator station on Lebanon Street, to replace the existing one, which is on Garden Street. Anybody who wants to speak in favor of this project, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Anybody who wants to come forward to support this initiative, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Anybody who wants to come forward, please state your name and address for the record. I'm not going to close it out. So now I'm going to go to anybody who wants to speak against it. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have control of that. Who has that? Thanks, Steve. Good, good catch, Counsel Winslow. I don't have that on my computer. I'm not controlling that Zoom. Yeah, I don't see anybody. I think he wants to just go to the attendees to the right. Yeah, just click on that. Yeah, there we go. Nope. Okay. Anybody who wants to come forward, state your name and address for the record? Everybody who wants to come forward and speak against this project, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none and hearing none, I want to take a motion to table by Counsel Winslow?
The meeting.
Okay, Counsel Winslow's motion to table, seconded by Counselor Murphy. Clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan. McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley. Seika.
Yes.
Seminelli. Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Spatafora.
Did you say Spatafora?
I did.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was reading ahead. Next order of business.
Paper 255-22, order that the Malden City Council evaluate and make changes if necessary to the municipal code of Malden, MCC, Title VI, Chapter 08, Section 100B3, which states that the area controlled by the business of sufficient size to allow a storage or display of no fewer than 15 cars in paved, lined, and numbered spaces no smaller than 10 by 20, and B, employee and customer parking of no fewer than nine, three spaces, provided that one additional employee customer parking space shall be required for each additional 20 spaces of, to, for storage or display. All spaces shall be clearly lined, numbered, and designated in yellow traffic paint as storage, display, or employee customer parking.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy, for covering. Counsel Seika for the paper.
Motion to ordain.
On Counsel Seika's motion to ordain, seconded by Counsel Crowe. Clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley. Seika.
Yes.
Seminelli. Winslow. Spatafora carries.
Spatafora, yes.
Ten, zero.
Next order of business.
Paper, Paper 305-22, resolve that the mayor be requested to provide regular weekly updates to the city council in public executive session or in writing as appropriate to address any ongoing matters that impact the city of Malden's reputation and/or present legal or financial liabilities.
Counsel, this is a motion for the passed resolve. Counsel O'Malley, you would like to speak? Okay, Counsel O'Malley for the paper, for the resolve. Let me get your mic on. There you go.
So you heard a bit about it during, during the budget thing. And really, that, that being is, if there's any ever a time when you let the city council know what's going on, it's during the budget. We need to know what is going on in the landscape. And it's not a politics thing. I mean, in the past, if, if, if other counselors who I do not align with found out that there were things going on, like the things I read about on Facebook and don't hear directly from the mayor's office, it would have been a big issue. I'm just saying, the communication needs to improve. We need to know what's going on. It's not a political thing. It's purely, I don't want to be asked questions on the street and have the answer be, I have never heard about that. How did you find out? And they say, well, I found out from so and so, and so, and so, and so, and so. The rumor mill is not how you run a city. We need to have clear communication between the mayor and the council, co-equal branches of government. I'm not going to go through a laundry list of the things that I hear and don't find out about directly, because I think that would be not productive. All I'm asking is regular communication, whether it's through the council president, whether it's through writing, or an email, or an executive session. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Counselor Karen Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. So, thank you for putting this forward. I wasn't, when I read it, I thought, you're right. We do hear a lot of good communication. Nobody can doubt how hard Maria Louise works. I've worked with her for many years. However, communication, you know, the day you stop to try and do better, I mean, that's when you should give up. So I think, I agree. I also get questions out that I'm not sure of the answers to. So I'd be willing definitely to support this. Maybe not even weekly. I don't know. Maybe we can say something in writing, maybe it be monthly, if weekly's too much. But definitely would be nice to have a better idea so that we can prepare ourselves when things come to the council. I definitely do reach out, like Counsel Condon was saying, I do reach out. I've asked a couple of questions, like, when is the teen center going to be opening? When is this happening? I do. But if you don't know what is happening, how are you supposed to be reaching out? And how do you know who to reach out to and what questions to ask? So I think just like a short, it doesn't even have to get into detail, maybe, like, this is happening, and then we could ask the questions. So at least we know what questions to ask and who to ask them to. So I think it's a great idea. Thank you for putting it forward.
Thank you. Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, I mean, communication is always great to have that. I do note, like, in our order of business, item number 10 is communications, and at least in our rulebook it says, and reports from city officers. So maybe we should, in our agenda, just remind ourselves, that's where that stuff's supposed to get programmed. And I mean, I think, you know, since we really only go through the full order of business every other week, we may just want to call that out for our, you know, our regular meetings, you know, since we don't really do that during our council the whole, unless it's specifically requested. But, you know, I mean, I think it is, obviously, there are litigation matters that come up that we need to know about. I know a few weeks back, there was some announcement that we heard, and I never heard any follow-up on. So it's, it's, you know, related to some announcements. They thought we were going to, that was coming out in the papers that did not come out. So, you know, I think it's always good to have more, especially if there's things that have legal implications that we should be aware about, that, you know, maybe we should, should or not, should or should not be commenting on. So I mean, I think I would, I could be supportive of just asking for, you know, updates, mayor's communications every couple of weeks. I know, working in other cities, you know, generally there would be a mayor's report every week, every other week. And when I was in Gloucester, it was just part of the routine of how they actually developed their city council agendas. I mean, there'd be a 100-page report from the mayor on all a lot of things, you know. So that was the type of thing that I've seen other cities do. A lot of that was administrative stuff in terms of, you know, papers to change the budget, and other approving grants and other type of things that we may not do at that level of detail. But generally, every full council meeting did have a report from the mayor's office. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Counsel Seika.
Thank you, Counsel Spatafora. So I think communication, it's a little funny, because a couple of years ago, when I was council president, I tried to communicate at the beginning of COVID, and people took that communication, and my fellow colleagues decided to file open meeting law violations against me when I was just trying to give out information. So I think a lot of people these days are hesitant as to how they release information to certain people. So I don't necessarily think that the mayor needs to come down every week. I think the information that we are to receive, we receive. I don't think that Mayor Christensen does a bad job at that. Like, like Counselor Condon said, Maria is here for everything. If there's something, I'm, I don't always hear everything, especially a lot of times with the school committee, we're kind of out of the loop. So when I hear something, I call Maria. Maria, did you hear about this? What do I need to know in case somebody is asking me in my ward about this particular situation? I pick up the phone and I call. I don't necessarily think that the mayor needs to come here every week, every other week, or even monthly. I think he communicates the information that we need to know, when we need to know it. H R issues are not our issues, they're H R issues. The stuff that we deal with as a city council is the stuff that we deal with as a city council. And I get that you keep saying that we're an equal, equal body of government. We're two separate bodies of government. That's, that's part of that whole checks and balances process, Counsel O'Malley. So we're not equal to the mayor. We complement each other quite nicely. That's how this, this works. I don't necessarily need to know everything that's going on in the mayor's office every day of, of the year. And I'm pretty confident that he has department head meetings every other meeting, that if you wanted to attend to find out more information of what's going on with the city, you're more than welcome to, to join those meetings. They're open to everyone sitting on this council. Because I know when I was council president, I wasn't the only one that was going to those meetings. And Counsel Spatafora meets with the mayor that, the same morning, an hour before the department head meeting, to go over what's going on in the city. And he's updated. And if it's stuff that we need to know about, then that's his job as council president to let us know. But again, he may also be a little concerned with sending out information that could potentially be an open meeting law violation. So it's, it's kind of, it's a weird thing we got going on here, because people are afraid at this point to communicate with one another in fear of their colleague filing an open meeting law violation on them, when they're merely trying to just get the information out there so everybody's on the same page. So it's, I am not in support of this resolve. I don't want to micromanage the mayor or the mayor's office. I think what I need to know, I know. As far as, you know, the story a couple of weeks ago, Counsel Winslow, that was all over the news. You must have missed it. It was in the newspaper, it was on the news, it was everywhere. So we, we haven't. So, we, we haven't probably been told any information about it, because there's no information to be told. The courts are completely backlogged, we got the first initial story, this is coming out, this is what you need to know, and I'm sure as soon as it goes to court and anything else transpires, we'll be notified. The city solicitor's, city solicitor's office will come down, and they'll let us know, you know, all the updates and what is actually going on, and what we need to know, because it's a human resource thing. We can't go into executive session and discuss employees without notifying the employee and having them in there with us. So it's not just about, let's go into executive session, we need to notify them, they need to bring an attorney with them if they want. So, I don't get paid enough money up here to, to do what I'm doing now and to worry about what's going on in the mayor's office. I truly don't. So I am not in support of this resolve, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Seeger. Counsel Karen Cologne Hayes for the second time.
Thank you. So, just a couple of things, I was listening to what Counsel Seeger was saying. One of the, I have full confidence in our legal team to be able to, especially when it comes to the open meeting law, because I've been, you know, called in, we had to talk about some things and make sure I have it clear, so I'm sure they would not allow anything to come out of the mayor's office that would break open meeting laws, it would be a communication or something like that. So, that part I understand, and I have full confidence that that wouldn't happen. But the other thing, you came up with a really good point. I do, I, I used to attend those director head meetings, and you're right, lots of information go on in there, so I think a great idea would be to have that, if there was a way we can participate or have them take, because people work during the day, it's at 10:00 AM. So, that's a really great way, so that if people want to call in on Zoom or have it recorded, that we could do that, and then it would be on us, so that's a great compromise, and thank you for saying that, reminded me that that happened.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Condon.
Thank you. I've already spoke on this prior, but I really think those department head meetings, department heads need to have freedom to do their work. They don't work for, we're here once a week, every other week. We're here, we're here every week, but every other week's a council meeting. So, I've ne, I've always tried to show the people that run this city, you know, we make the ordinances, but the people that are out there doing it really need to be able to do their job without being micromanaged by city councils and have to worry about us micromanaging them, because over the years, they just do a tremendous job, they're dedicated employees in the city. So, you know, J.D. made a lot of sense, we do have to worry, because we've been told not to violate the open meeting law. I think everybody knows that, and we're very careful of it. You know, no one wants to embarrass the city, so, like I said, Maria Louise is here every week, she, I don't think she misses, ever. But, I, I want to give her the courtesy, if I want to know what's going on, if I miss something, I would pick up the phone and call Maria, and she, if she didn't know the answer, she'd get me the answer. Thank you, I'm not going to vote for this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel O'Malley for the second time.
To, to kind of echo what has been said, you know, we don't know what we don't know. And I don't think it would be reasonable for me to go up to Maria every meeting and say, "Hi Maria, what scandals and controversies occurred this week?" I think that that's not reasonable. All I'm asking is for a, some type of communication, I'm not looking for a, a book.
Point of information, Counsel Condon.
I never heard the word scandals, whatever word you brought up, innuendos, I didn't mention, and I don't think Counsel Seeger did.
Is that your, is that your point of information? Thank you, Counsel O'Malley, floor draws.
So, again, I just, I don't, we don't know what we don't know. To Counsel Winslow's point, we need to know what we can't talk about. I remember, maybe my first week or two of the council, we had the Amaralt situation, I got a call from Counsel Murphy and said, "Hey, we're being sued by, by an individual, if someone calls you like the news, don't talk about it." Under Counsel Murphy, under Counsel Crowe, under Counsel Di Maria, we got communication about what was going on, the high-level stuff of what is going on, so we know what is happening. It's not a reflection on Counsel, Counsel President Spatafora. Again, to Counsel Seeger's point, we don't want to violate open meeting law. The mayor is not a member of the public body and cannot violate the open meeting law with the city council. He can violate with the school committee, he can't violate with us. So I think it would be helpful to get some type of bi-weekly, to Counsel Winslow's point, communication explaining what's going on. I, I would move to amend the paper to bi-weekly, I would move it to a monthly. I'm just finding out about things that have occurred five months ago, that, and I'm finding out through Facebook, and they, and it's related to department heads that report to the city council. These are things that should be brought up to us, not because I'm opposed to this, but because it's about communication, so that we're all on the same page as a community. We work, I've said this, we work better when we work together, the mayor and the council. We work better when we're brought into the loop earlier rather than later. Perfect example, the moving of the Converse Building on Ferry Street to the, to the lawn, that was announced in the newspaper, no communication with me whatsoever. As the ward councillor, I would have liked some communication to be involved in that process early on. It's not political, it's literally just so that I can do my job effectively, so that each and every one of us can do our job effectively. That's all I'm asking. What's going on? Monthly, bi-weekly would be great.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Karen Cologne Hayes for the third time.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond again about the director's head meetings. Something going on over there?
I'm sorry, Counsel, somebody was asking if I was skipping them.
Okay.
Counsel, I would do as a question, Counsel?
Yeah, so, I was responding, I just wanted to let since Condon, Counsel Condon, actually and everybody here, know that I used to, you know, again, be at the director head meetings every week for years, and so, really what it is, is a report out, there's no back and forth, there's nothing, it's actually really a great thing to attend, a lot of the council presidents are able to attend. As a matter of fact, I'm pretty sure, I don't know, I can ask, if I wanted to attend, could I?
Yes.
Or no?
You can, you can attend.
Okay. So, I guess we could do that, but the only problem is, no, you can't.
Oh yes, you gotta, you gotta make sure there's not five councils there, because you have a quorum. But if a couple councils, not that we can't attend, you just, you can't have more than five.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's a report out, out, I'm just saying to try and find a different way, from what Counsel Seeger was saying about the director has meeting, or a different way, if it's too hard to write a quick update, you know, once a month, that would be an easier way. I'm not going to push that issue, but I just say, like, for transparency and for, like, just to know, more knowledge is power, and I'm not sure what the big deal is here, but I'm going to end on that note, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hayes, Karen Cologne Hayes. Counsel Crowe, and then Counsel Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't be voting for this, because I do think communication is a two-way street. I think your message was sent pretty clear that you want more increased communication, but unless we are going to be starting to send the mayor a weekly communication about what we're working on, it's not the two-way street. So, you mean, so some of it is, yeah, keep that open-ended communication going, and again, I mean, Maria Louise is here, so knows that, you know, more communication is welcomed and wanted. But I do think we find out the things when we, when we sort of need to know, and sometimes it is, if people are working through it, the more of us that know, the more open-ended it is, I mean, open meeting law, or that it, you know, gets down, it ends up on Facebook or ends up on something else. So I, I think we get it when we should, and again, communication's a two-way street, and this is very one-way.
Thank you, Counsel Crowe. Counsel Simonelli. Hold on, Counsel Simonelli, one second, let me put your mic on. Counsel Simonelli. Don't touch it, Counsel Simonelli.
Oh, sorry, can't touch it?
Get along the rules.
Am I good now?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
We can, we can hear you.
All right, just checking. Yeah. Communication is important, absolutely. I don't, I don't really feel it's necessary to call the mayor down on a weekly basis. I'm sure he'll come down if there's something that is extremely important that we really need to know about. Other than that, I, I would think, you know, a, maybe a synopsis of the department head meetings on a weekly basis, sent down to the council president, to the clerk at our office, right? And then she can, like, you know, make copies of them and, and give them with our packets. How come we don't get packets anymore? We used to get packets every week.
Green world council, no more.
All right, all right, just checking. But, you know, I mean, I, I think that would suffice, to be honest with you, I don't, I don't think that, I really don't think you need to come down here on a, on a weekly or even bi-weekly basis. I mean, I think as long as we're getting those things done, then, then the proper way to do it, under parliamentary rules of procedure, would be that if there is something that sticks out to us, and we see something that we, we don't understand or don't like or what have you, we can always request that the mayor come down before the city council so that he can clear up those issues that we may have. That's far and few between, but you still have it, you still have an avenue to be able to ask the mayor to come down. But I think, like, if we got, like, a weekly synopsis of the department head meetings on what's going on, you know, and send it to the clerk or city council president, I think that would suffice. But, Counsel O'Malley, my friend. I, I appreciate that, I appreciate that, but I, you, I just sometimes don't understand, like, I totally understand what you're saying, and I, I support what you're saying as far as that, you know, you'd like to have some more communication, but I just like the scandals and all that stuff, it's just, it's not necessary. It's, I mean, what scandals? You know, it's, we don't want to make, we don't want to give the public a false sense out there of that there's like, underhanded stuff going on up here at City Hall. I think we all do a very fantastic job and work very hard, and, you know, I know we're all trying to work together, and it's not easy, because it's politics, and we've got different views on things, and, you know, you know, I think we are making some progress, and we are trying to work together, and I think that's great. But, you know, I think sometimes, the choice of words, sometimes, you, you, you gotta kind of, you know, I know you're a passionate guy, but sometimes, you know, and take it from me, because I have gotten myself in trouble more times than many, as far as putting my foot in my mouth and saying things that, you know, I shouldn't say or the way I say them. But there's a lot of good things, a lot of good things that are going on up here at City Hall. I mean, once you take a, once, this building alone, then when you take a walk outside this building and see all the things that are going on and continuously going on, and you're part of that, Counsel O'Malley, most of this is, is your neighborhood and your ward. So, I mean, I just think that, you know. I'm sorry, I don't even know what happened there, I think somebody's trying to warn me, I'm on the, I'm on the mic too.
Five dollars to the teen center, that's the new wall.
Five dollars, you got it. It might be 10, because I think they got a call back. But anyway, so, I'm just saying that there's a lot of real good things going on, there's a lot of, there's a lot of camaraderie that's starting to come together. I wouldn't say there's a lot of camaraderie up here, but there's, it seems like it's starting to get together, and people are starting to work with each other and see how it fits. And, you know, I mean, my communication with the mayor's office, you know, and he'd be the first one to say it, that him and I don't always see eye to eye and have it, but his communication and his staff has been flawless since I've been elected to the city council. You know, they've, they've worked with me on almost everything that I'm, that I'm looking to do. So, you know, and sometimes, you know, you gotta ask questions yourself and find out and dig into some things and stuff like that. But there are a lot of real good things that are happening in the city, and I'm just saying that, you know, sometimes when you, you put out scandals, some people just run with that, you know, or underhandedly, or whatever it may be, because none of that is happening up here. I, I mean, I don't see it. I mean, you know, everybody sometimes makes mistakes, and all not perfect, but progress, not perfection. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Simonelli. Counselor Murphy for the first time. Hold on, I'll, I'll come back to you, Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, it's obviously great listening to everybody's opinion. I think I'm siding a little bit more with Counsel Crowe here. I think one of the points that she raised is, is a very solid point, and that is that communication is a two-way street. And I also think that if we as a council have a need to have more information, as opposed to doing this publicly like this, where it sounds like, you know, the mayor isn't giving us information, or where we don't know what's going on, I think, you know, the better thing would have been to sit down and have a conversation with Ms. Louise and Council President Spatafora, and see if we could come to some way that we could communicate better, more efficiently, both ways. Counsel Simonelli, although I do like your idea, the department head meeting is every two weeks, and it is, it can go a couple of hours, it's really, you know, can be quite a long meeting, and it's going to put an onus and more work on the mayor's office to actually have to take notes and do synopses. So, you know, I mean, that's something I wouldn't want to, you know, just say to them as a resolve, "We want you to do this." It's, I think, a conversation that I think we should have, an ongoing conversation we should have with Ms. Louise after this discussion tonight, about how we could increase communication going both ways. So I'm not going to vote on the resolve, it's, it's here today, even as amended by Counsel Simonelli, because what I'd like to see us do is take this offline and see if we can sit down and say, "Okay, what's important? What is it, you know, we would like to know if this type of thing happens in the mayor's office? We would like information on that." Everything else is kind of a matter of fact. You know, I thankfully haven't seemed to have the problems, Counsel O'Malley, that you have about finding out things on Facebook, I seem to find them out, maybe just because I'm talking to more department heads on a daily basis, I don't know. But I think, you know, we should outline what it is we'd like to know, and find a way to get that from the mayor's office, and also ask the mayor's office what they would like from us. And so I'd like to see the dialogue start that way, and then we can come up with a game plan. So, for that reason, I'm voting no on this tonight, but I think it's a conversation we should continue to have.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Counsel Seeger for the second time.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. I just wanted to point out one more time that I'm sitting here re-reading this resolve over and over again. It says that the mayor be requested to provide regular weekly updates to the city council in public executive session or in writing as appropriate to address any ongoing matters that impact the city of Malden's reputation and/or present legal or financial liabilities. This resolve actually, actually should be geared more towards our city solicitor's office, as they would be the department that would actually be giving us this particular information, legal or financial liabilities. That is something that would come from our city solicitor's office, not the mayor. So I think that we can come up with another way to get, you know, some communication from our mayor's office if that's what we so want, but this particular resolve is asking for things such as the rumor mill. So Counsel O'Malley, if you are hearing things on the street and you haven't gotten an email from the legal department letting you know that it's actually happening, going on, then the rumor mill is alive and well in Malden, and that's all that it is, is a rumor. Because the city solicitor's office is pretty good at letting us know when we have employees who have been, you know, charged with a crime or some other thing. So, the city of Malden is, is very good and very known with their rumor mill. So if you don't get an email from the city solicitor's office, you can chalk it up as a rumor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Seeger. Counsel Simonelli for the second time.
Thank you, Mr. President. And if you don't take any of my advice while I'm up here, I would just give you this last one, stay off Facebook. So.
I agree.
Right? Get you, get you in trouble. I mean, you could peruse it, but it can get you in trouble, you know what I mean?
All right, Cal, everybody, please, we got councils remote, they can't hear, so, so, before I go to Counsel O'Malley for the fourth time, I can, I can, okay, third, but I'm going to speak because, can I, all right, you have the floor, hurry up.
I do. I wasn't done, I wasn't, that wasn't my topic.
Well, I was trying to make you done.
I know you are, you're always rushing me, like the two old guys on the Muppets. So now, listen, this is, this is the thing that I'm going to say. I, you know, I, I understand what Counsel Murphy is, was saying just now, and, you know, I, but I have to say that. I, but I have to say that I don't think Counselor O'Malley is wrong. I look at, I get what you're reading here and I know that and I had mentioned that and I said that. So what I'm trying to say is like information like if there is something that's serious, like day-to-day operations that you talk about probably all the time in those two-week every two-week department head meetings and nothing comes up. So there's really nothing. So I think what Counselor, I don't want to speak for him, but I think what Counselor O'Malley is trying to say is that, you know, he wants, you know, information when something does, something big does hit and it may potentially go to the media or something. But I mean, that could be just like a just a quick text off to us or an email, you know, just saying, please, you know, be advised. If you can even actually talk about it, if it's not illegal to talk about it because it might be under current investigation or what have you. So those things there, they probably couldn't talk about. So I'm just saying that maybe, I don't know, maybe a little brief synopsis if there's any subject matter that, you know, needs to get to us that is going to give a bad reputation or what have you to the city when it comes to something that, you know, an arrest has been made of an employee or something to that effect. I'm just using it for an example. I don't think that's a bad thing to, you know, because, you know, Counselor Condon has already set it up here. We are part-time counselors. We come up here once a week. So, and don't get me wrong too, Counselor O'Malley, we gotta do our due diligence to seek the information ourself and, you know, make some phone calls and communication is two ways. But I don't see it being a big deal if we just got a brief synopsis of what transpired. We don't need word for word on the breakdown of, you know, the DPW itinerary for the week. But as far as like if something serious came up, you know, that we needed to know about, and I think Marie Louise does that already, like Counselor Condon had said, with the COVID stuff, with other stuff, you know, I get emails all the time where it's something that's concerning. So, like I said, I don't see it being a big deal just to ask for a, every couple of weeks of synopsis. And we may not even get one that two weeks because there might not be nothing to report. You know, it's not like, you know, people that were on this high hit list here of the city of Malden and, you know, like New York City or something and we got something going on every week or, you know, sorry, Counselor Cologne Hayes, but I know that's where you're from. But you know what I'm saying? It's not like we have this high repetition of things happening that we need to be, that we need to know about quickly. But when they do come up, I guess, you know, we probably should be informed where we are, city counselors.
We get the point, Counselor.
You get it, good.
I get it, thank you. All right, before I go to Counsel O'Malley though, I do want to read something because I've been waiting for the end, but I know this has been a little bit longer debate. First, I'm going to speak, I did meet with the mayor today and the mayor did give me a letter to read, which I will read. We didn't have time to put it into the official record, but I will hand to the clerk and circulate it once I get my notes off it. So I'm going to read the mayor's letter and then I'm going to give you my experience with the mayor. "Dick, City Council President Spatafora, I write to you in the address of the resolution on today's docket sponsored by Ward for Counsel Ryan O'Malley. This paper requests that the mayor be required to provide weekly updates to the city council on the matters that impact the city's reputation, impact the city's legality or financially. It is an of course undeniable that every item the city council works on is of an interest to my office and that's why I have a member of my staff, typically my chief of staff, at virtually every city council meeting. This practice also provides an opportunity for the city council to inquire on matters where it looks for information from my administration. Since taking office, I have taken pride in making the effort, the extra effort, excuse me, to communicate with our residents, department heads and with our employees and with the city council. When a matter strikes me of such importance that it bears calling up to the city council, my administration does that. We have regularly proactively provided updates on important legal matters, often in executive session. Any financial papers explained with the appropriate city staff, including, excuse me, attending the financial committee meeting to answer questions and address concerns. Almost every item we deal with has a legal component, a financial component or impacts the city's reputation. Not to mention that most, if not all, personnel matters are confidential and even if brought to executive session would have to be done so with legal notice to affect employee and the opportunity to have legal counsel present. So setting up once a week meeting updates from the mayor to the city council is presumably having the city council do the same and address my administration would not accomplish the goal of the sponsor's paper. Rather, what will work is good old-fashioned communication which takes work, commitment and requires mutual respect for each other's role. I remain committed, I know you do as well. Sincerely, Gary Christensen, Mayor of City of Malden." So I got this today when I met with the mayor. Make sure everybody gets a copy of that, excuse my scribble. I'll get a clean one. I will just speak this and then I'll let Counsel O'Malley have his remarks. I don't think any counselor here has worked with, and first of all, I think Counselor Simonelli said it, I don't always see eye to eye with the mayor. I never have. I've served with him since he was a ward counsel. But nobody can undeniably say that Counselor Christensen and Mayor Christensen does not over-communicate. He certainly also does, he works the part. So while I respect the paper, I'm not going to support it simply because I don't expect him to send down an order asking us to give him weekly updates because I would laugh just like he would probably undoubtedly laugh at us ordering him around. But what I will say is I will give an example of what a weekly call goes like. It is the most benign call you have, they usually last 20 minutes and it just talks about the agenda items. There is no secrecy, there is no top secret, there is no negotiations, there is no scandals. But one did take place, which I think Counselor Winslow did mention, was when the fire department was notified that there was going to be an indictment. The mayor called me up and asked what I was doing and asked that I immediately leave what I was doing, come to the city council, excuse me, come to his office. Where I sat in there with himself, the fire chief, Marie Louise, and we had on the call the city solicitor. That entire process, the mayor wanted to know when we could let the council know because it was an ongoing legal matter and that that communication was drafted that night by our legal counsel, like all important communications are, not to be shared with the public because we were talking about not only a criminal matter, but certainly somebody who was still at that time, I think, employed with the city of Malden. And then there was a meeting that afternoon which I grabbed everybody individually, again, without having any open meeting law violation. Let them know there was a forthcoming email from my office, from the mayor's office, understanding what was going to happen with the Malden Fire Department. We cannot continue to speak on that matter because it is an ongoing investigation. It is not over. But I would say that's the biggest quote-unquote scandal that I have administered, have been part of since the mayor's office, since I've been city council president. And I cannot say that the mayor did not handle it perfectly well and within, say, an hour and a half of me finding out about it, the council was briefed. The council knew before the public knew and that's the way it should work. I think there are some matters he's going to keep close to his vest and not going to tell me or any other council and he doesn't have to do that right. Do I think we could have more communication? I do. But one thing I do remember from our inclusion training, inequity training, was we need to talk more. And that is probably doing it like we're doing it now, but amongst each other instead of doing it through Facebook or social media, which we all know to some degree is a slippery slope because we are elected officials and we cannot advocate on social media because there's already case law that says that that is debating publicly. So the idea that I think we should sit down in the room and hammer this out, we do, but we have to make sure there's not five of us in a room. And I will tell you this, I am scared to death about sending any communication to this council directly. We are closed on Fridays and once something important comes out, I cannot send it to the full council so the public knows. I have to send it to Lisa the clerk, which they're off. Not that I couldn't get a hold of them. But personally, I think I've been up three or four times in open meeting law violations for simply doing what the request is here is communicating general information. So I am a little gun-shy as a president and as a council to communicate anything to this body without being dragged through the mud again, both publicly and privately about matters that, to quick frankly, were pedestrian. One was me saying, "Great work for the Mystic Valley Elderly Services, giving ride to COVID." That's what I was brought up in open meeting law violation. And the idea now that I'm going to communicate this to the full council on a weekly basis, I'm not going to do it. I will take the mayor's communication that he wants to give me just like I would take anybody here's communication and send it up to the mayor's office. And for that matter, everybody knows it's mayor. You don't have to give me the communication, you can send that to the mayor himself. Marie Louise is here every night. I understand the intent of this, I just will not support it. I'm not talking ill-will of it, I will just say that if, I will, I spoke to the mayor about it, if there's something that comes up that it's immediate, I will certainly get that out. But I can give you one example. The beginning of this year when the mayor was talking about roadwork, I asked him, "Do you want me to send out the list to the full council?" He says, "No, I'm going to call every council individually." So if there's a council here, do not get a call from the mayor's office on what roads and his or her wards were going to be done, raise your hand because I would like to go back to the mayor and say he was wrong because I know he did it himself. So I think the communication is a two-way street. We can all certainly get better, I will not support this. But I appreciate it. Thank you, Counsel. Thank you for the honor. Counsel O'Malley.
Your roadwork topic was a good segue. To Counselor Crowe's point about a two-way street, I 100% agree. Whenever there's something that I feel like I need to reach out proactively to, about, to the mayor's office, I call Marie Louise. We don't always see eye to eye on things, but I always call Marie Louise when it's something I think that I can approach Marie Louise on. There were some things recently that I wasn't sure if I could because I didn't know if maybe Marie Louise was part of that bargaining unit. These are things that we should be aware of immediately, particularly when they have to do with staff that reports to us. Not because I'm opposed to it, but because it needs to be a two-way street. And speaking of two-way street, the mayor doesn't have to have public meetings. He can have meetings in his office with whoever he wants and as many people as he wants. The mayor can't violate the open meeting law. We can. So we have public meetings every week. We have public dockets every week. That is our street. That is that level of communication going that direction. Those are the weekly updates, our public meetings. Again, I'm not asking the mayor to come down here every week. I'm asking for some type of update and for us to be given the respect of knowing what is going on when it's controversial and when it's not controversial. The roadwork, I really appreciated the fact that Mayor Christensen called me and let me know about what roadwork was going on. That's an easy call to make. The harder calls about, I mean, scandal and things, I didn't say it to throw bombs. It's real. We have two ongoing civil rights lawsuits. I'm not going to get into the details. One related to an alleged wrongful death. Another related to an alleged violation of someone's Fourth Amendment rights. We have recently heard about narcotics dealing in public buildings. I'm not saying, I'm not, I express
We're making this a little bit political to get a point across.
No, no, it's really not.
Counselor, there are two ongoing litigations that you're saying enough to get the public update. We know what they are, but I'm not going to allow you to start debating.
I'm not. I promise you I'm not. But those things happened years ago.
Yeah, and they've been in executive session.
And we found out about it recently.
Well, I'm not going to speak on timelines, but I think by us even discussing this publicly, we're creating a challenge. I mean, somebody who goes to law school understands.
I'm going to stop, I'm going to stop. I'm just saying timely communication about serious stuff going on in our community, I want to know about it. Not years later, not five months later, as soon as reasonably possible. That's all I'm asking for.
Thank you, Counsel. All right, was there an amendment, Counselor Simonelli? All right, Counselor Simonelli, please state your amendment so I can have it for the record.
The amendment that I would make is that, I don't know, some kind of correspondence within, you know, a monthly, maybe a month, well, it's every two weeks is the meeting. So if you're every two weeks, if it's something that is significant, I mean, I don't know what the language you'd put in there, so it's significant, because I really don't want to
Your amendment, tell me. The mayor give us an update every two weeks, is that what you
I'd say give us an update after the staff meeting, maybe, you know, it doesn't have to be right away. But if it's anything that is significant to what a need-to-know basis would be for the city counselors. Not, you know, like I said, not a, not, you know, the DPW's, you know, weekly report or something of what they, we don't need that. I'm saying if it's something significant.
All right, so I get it. I'll entertain a second. Counsel Carol Caron Hayes seconded it. Clerk will call the roll. Cologne Hayes. Condon. Crowe. McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy. O'Malley. Sika. Simonelli.
Yes.
Winslow. Spatafora. Spatafora, no.
Fails five to five.
Fails five to what? Five to five. Okay. Now for the resolve. Counselor, the resolve on paper 305-22, Counselor Ryan O'Malley's resolve. Okay, Counselor O'Malley's motion to table. Need a second?
Second.
Counselor Simonelli seconded, clerk will call the roll. He tabled his paper, his resolve. Cologne Hayes.
Second.
No, 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 Counsel, no, no, Counselor Simonelli's motion, amendment failed. Counselor O'Malley made a motion to table, I didn't have his mic on, he yelled it quickly. So Counselor Carrie McDonald, if you hear that, he made a motion to table. So again, just be cognizant, Counselor McDonald might not hear if the mic's not on, so, especially if you're making an amendment or a motion. Clerk will call the roll. Cologne Hayes. Condon. Crowe. Lanning. McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy. O'Malley. Sika. Simonelli.
Yes.
Winslow. Spatafora.
No.
Fails five to five. Tie, tie, five, five again. Okay. Next order of business. Got a couple more pages, ladies and gentlemen. Paper 306-22, order the city solicitor to provide an objective legal memo with citations to law and material fact on the unionization of department heads. Counselor O'Malley for the paper? The resolve, excuse me. No, it's a paper. Counselor O'Malley, your mic's on.
Again, you pretty much heard me, you know, we were just notified today, not by the city, but by our department head's legal representative from the union, that they unionized at the end of last year or the beginning of last, or the beginning of this year. We have now been given an agreement. I first found out about this on Facebook and this is part of it. I'm not aware of this when it's impacted department heads before, particularly employees that report to us. I am a huge supporter of unions. I come from a union family, I've been in the union, I've been in the Teamsters Union. My understanding is that unions are there to protect rank and file workers and I find it interesting when high-level management is unionizing. I think we should know, I want to understand the landscape in terms of what's going on, just so that we as a city can be aware of it. I look forward to working with the mayor's office on this, hand in hand. I think this is our due diligence, just to understand what's going on. I'm not opposed to this, I just think it's important that we understand what is going on because this is very unusual. Thank you.
Okay, couple lights, Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I mean, listen, you know, with this unionization thing, you know, I heard about it pretty much after I was elected in November. Why you're just hearing about it now, I have no idea. I mean, everybody, every department head that I have talked to since I got elected, you know, was telling me about it. I called the mayor, talked to the mayor about it. So it's not, it's not no, it's not new that happened. And I know that, and I know that your your concern is with the department heads. And you know what, I'm going to address the elephant in the room. I think the department heads are unionizing, just like everywhere else is. Everett, all the, you know, the other communities that he was talking about. It's because, you know what, you know, people are afraid out there. They're afraid, they're afraid of, oh, somebody else coming in and they're doing a hard, they're working real hard and doing a great job and feeling as though that, you know, they're going to be replaced like that. And I think that's a terrible thing, I think it's a terrible feeling to feel that way and be looking over your shoulder. And the sentiment has been that here. I mean, let's face it, you know, during my time of running for office, there was rumors floating around, if this one gets in, that one gets in, this one's gone, that one's gone. there was rumors floating around, if this one gets in, that one gets in, this one's gone, that one's gone. Nobody, nobody wants to live like that. Nobody should live like that. They're working hard, you know, they shouldn't do, they got families, they got the support, they got bills to pay. You know, we get into politics to help people, not hurt them. And, you know, that's why I truly believe, that's why they're unionizing, so they don't have to worry about those things. And I don't really, you know, I don't see it being a big deal. I mean, if you, if you got a good relationship with the pop heads and, you know, you're trying to do the right thing yourself, things will get done just the same. But I think that is one of the reasons why that, you know, these individuals already have decided to unionize. Because, you know, I mean, after, if I was working here in the city for 20 years, you know, and putting my heart and soul into it, and then all of a sudden, you know, someone comes in and because they don't like the way I dress or chew gum, they feel as though it's, you know, their right to get rid of me. You know, I've been there and I know what it feels like to, you know, all of a sudden have your legs chopped off from underneath you. And, you know, you got to go out and find another thing to go somewhere else and do some other things and your family's dependent on you and you got other things going on. So, you know, I, you know, the reason for them unionizing, the writing's on the wall. You know, when people start making accusations that they're going to come in and get rid of department heads when they get into your administration or this, that, and the other thing, what do you expect them to do? You got to expect them to, to, to unionize or protect themselves best that they can. You know, they, again, you know, you've been working here 15, 20 years and all of a sudden they got to be in fear of their job for no reason. So, I mean, I've worked in that field. I was an employee relations advisor, just like I know my colleague Paul called it at the postal service, was the executive director for employee relations and labor relations advisor. I did that for five years for the Department of Corrections. And that's why their captains unionized. Because, you know, whoever the next administration puts in as a commissioner, they can be gone at a flick of the finger. And I think that's totally unfair and I think we live in better times than to be able to do that to people. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor McDonald, we thought we lost you, so disregard the message I just left you. You're here. The screen went blank on this side, so. All right, Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just reading the order. And it says that the city solicitor provide an objective legal memo with citations to law and material fact on the unionization of department heads. It's, you know, it's my understanding that the mayor's office actually sought outside legal help for this unionization process. So I don't think the city solicitor is the right person to go to for this advice. I think the name of the firm we used was Clifford and Kenny. And I think that, you know, we should, if we want to get the legal memo with citations on how citations to law and material fact on the unionization of department heads, I think that this resolve should be addressed to Clifford and Kenny and not the city solicitor.
You were looking for? All right, hold on. Is it here? Is that the correct, is that the law, is that, can you just come to the podium? Yeah, I can bring you up here.
Good evening. So here's to me, Assistant City Solicitor.
But that's the law firm we use for labor relations, right?
It was until recently, but at the time this petition to unionize the department heads was initiated, I believe that was the outside counsel that the union representative referenced. It wasn't our office.
But, but they used, that's the one that the city uses for all union, right? Or did? Not just for this?
They did. They did, yeah.
All right, so, so Counsel Murphy, and so here, do we have a new one that we would address it to? Do you know the name or are we not ready to share that?
One second. I wasn't sure how to say this, but I'm in, apparently.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
We don't even have to worry about it. Congratulations, okay. All right, so, but during the time, it was this outside law firm that we use for all union, right? All union?
That's my understanding, yeah.
And now we're using in-house, you're the labor attorney?
Correct.
Well, congratulations. Counsel Murphy, I don't know, I heard a second, but I don't know if you want to ask any questions?
Well, are you, would you be prepared, the way this resolve is written, is this something you would be prepared to be able to address? Or is it something that you feel Clifford and Kenny would be better addressing because they were the law firm that handled it?
Our office is perfectly prepared to address it and
Okay.
we'd be just as ready and prepared to do it as Clifford and Kenny would. It would come officially from the city solicitor, even if I helped her on it. So she would, you know, she would be the one who formally gave you any opinion.
Okay, no, that's fine. All right, that clarifies that, so.
Okay, so here, you might just have to stay close, but you can, if anybody has any questions. So I heard, I believe that was a motion?
Well.
Or amendment?
Well, no, it sounds.
I heard a second from Counsel Crowe, that's why.
I know.
Hold on, Counsel Crowe, just for the benefit of Counsel Carrie McDonald, Counsel Crowe?
No, and I only second it because I do think it's probably more appropriate, given he, you know, they were at the beginning and understood it. But listening to our city's Assistant City Solicitor, I'm.
He feels it's, if he feels he can answer it.
He can do just as good a job.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Crowe. Counsel Murphy, you still have the floor. I do have Counsel Hayes, Counsel Condon, and Counsel Winslow waiting patiently, so Counsel.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Are you all set?
Yes.
Okay, now Counsel Karen Cologne Hayes, you have the floor.
Thank you. So I am also a big supporter of unions and honestly, I absolutely understand why someone would want to unionize. We all know what happened here. I did, I lost my job here. And so I would have loved to have been protected by a union. It was without cause, so I think that I'm all for them unionizing. What I'm not understanding, what I think would be a bigger problem is if people are unionizing because of rumors that someone might get in office and let them go, there's a bigger problem in the city than this. That's, that is scary and no one should be feeling that way about any job anywhere. Because the reality is, we could all lose a job. Anyone can lose their job right now. So that's just the reality. But I do support unions. I think it's necessary because it has happened. So I'm all for that. I just would have liked to have known it. Same thing with communications because, you know, again, if you don't know, who would know to ask somebody, hey, have you guys unionized lately? Like, it's just silly. So we did hear the union, the first thing I did was call up someone I trust and they said, yes, we did unionize. So that's the only way I found out. I can't believe that that would be like a secret or something that wouldn't be told to us. I would congratulate all of them. And the other is, I believe there is more unionizing going on for rank and file, so more power to them. I think that they probably should have been brought in when the directors, if I was a director, I would bring my team in and say, I know you have to go a different route, but let's talk about this. I'm not just trying to protect myself. I want to protect you too. And that's how it should have went down. So I'm just saying congratulations and hopefully the rank and file people who are working day to day in this city do unionize. And I will help in any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel Winslow. Did I not click that? I'm sorry, counsel.
Okay, yeah, no.
The old double-click.
I guess this is, this is something I, I did not hear of this until tonight, so I am a little surprised myself. So, I mean, I definitely very supportive of always rank and file folks going for unionization. I do also want to, I'm not a labor attorney, so I would appreciate just understanding what this means for the city and then working out. You know, I mean, I definitely think everybody deserves a fair shot. But, you know, there's also the challenge of, you know, the will of the voters. And sometimes elections have that effect and making sure that we as a city have the ability to reflect the wills of the voters in how we, you know, serve. So I'm definitely supportive of finding out more information about what this means and, you know, and working with our, I mean, all our department heads work hard. It's been a hard time during COVID and I really appreciate they all work hard. You know, but also knowing that sometimes, you know, there are changes in direction from a new administration, making sure that we have the ability to, you know, make those changes in direction at the will of the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Counsel Condon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify one thing. I'm not sure what management position you put me in, but I was I just want to explain one thing. I was dispute resolution. What they call, the postal service put in a Step B team. And I headed up the management Step B team and I worked with other union officers and chief stewards to resolve these grievances prior to going to arbitration to save both sides money on cases that didn't belong in arbitration. And we would resolve about 70% of them. And it was a successful program, but it came through the, each office in the Boston district. And it would go from the steward to a low-level supervisor, to the manager of any Boston post office, and then to the Step B team and we would work on it. So I just want to clarify that, but I grew to have a great respect for the union representatives. And I personally feel everybody should have a right to unionization, so, thank you. I just want to clarify that. But I appreciate my, yes. No, I just want, just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Condon. Okay, any questions? Clerk, read the paper. There's no amendments, right? Oh, oh, wait, so we're not going to amend it, right? So Counsel Murphy retracted that, so go ahead. Order the city solicitor provide an objective legal memo with citations to law and material fact on the unionization of department heads. Clerk will call the roll. Cologne Hayes. Condon. You can ask the clerk. Clerk, can you read that again? Did the city solicitor provide an objective legal memo with citations to law and material fact on the unionization of department heads? Crowe. McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy. O'Malley. Sika. Siminelli. Winslow. Spatafora. No. Carrie, seven to three. Next order of business. We need to go back. We need to go back because actually we forgot to do something. Counsel O'Malley's prior resolve, which failed the amendment as well as the table, and we never took up the entire paper. So now we have to vote on Counsel O'Malley's paper because we, the, we only, the tabling motion failed. So we never voted on the actual paper. We voted on the amendment, we voted on the tabling motion, so now we just got, because it failed to table. So now we have to vote on that paper. Everybody understand? I'm actually just looking at Counsel McDonald, sorry. Thank you. We're going to read your resolve again, right? Because there's no amendment?
There was a motion.
It's your resolve, right?
There was a motion to table.
It failed.
It failed. So the paper's still alive. So it didn't table. You need to take. I'll read the paper.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to go through it in the resolve. Paper 305, the resolve, that the city, that the mayor be requested to provide legal weekly updates. All right, I'll ask anybody calling. Somebody want to make a motion? Okay, Counsel Crowe, make that motion, please.
I think Counsel Siminelli, so he make that motion to.
Okay, Counsel Siminelli made the motion. Counsel Siminelli, make the motion?
Motion to pass.
Right.
You got to say that, counsel. I can't speak.
I'm sorry. It's a motion to pass the resolve.
Okay, thank you, counsel. On Counselor Siminelli's, you want to read the resolve again? Paper 305-22, resolve that the mayor be requested to provide regular weekly updates to the city council in public, executive session or in writing as appropriate to address any ongoing matters that impact the city of Marlin's reputation in or present legal or financial liabilities. So Counsel Siminelli's motion to pass, a yes vote would support this and no vote would say no. So Counsel Siminelli's a yes, motion of, oh, the screen just shut off. This is the first time. Go to tightrope and then go back. Try that. Counsel McDonald, we lost you again. We don't know if something, there's a timeout. It went blank, so we apologize.
I'm still here.
Okay, good. I need a second on Counsel Siminelli's motion to pass, so we can vote. And Counsel Siminelli, motion to pass, seconded by Counsel Crowe. Clerk will call the roll. So a yes vote was to pass the resolve and no vote was to not. Correct. Sorry, okay. Cologne Hayes. Condon. Crowe. McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy. O'Malley. Sika. Siminelli. Winslow. Spatafora. Spatafora, no. Motion fails. Fails four to six. Four to six. Next order of business. Paper 307-22, resolve that the city council welcome. Counsel Winslow, point information?
Did we handle paper 303-22 yet? This is just on, I think, a referral to.
Yeah.
Did we handle that? All right.
That was a long time ago. No, that's fine. Thank you. We did jump around, counsel, so if we skip something, I appreciate you helping here.
Hence information, hence information.
I got to shut Counsel Siminelli's mic off. Clerk, next order of business. Paper 307-22, resolve that city council welcome the Friends of Roosevelt Park fourth, represented by Laura Thompson, to discuss the fenced-off contaminated area at Roosevelt Park at the scheduled meeting on June 28, 2022, for a maximum time of 10 minutes. On Counsel Cologne, I'm sorry, I got lost. Counsel Karen Cologne Hayes' motion to pass the resolve, I do need a second. Do you want to speak on it, counsel? Okay, I was going to let you speak on it, but I was just reading my instructions. Counsel Karen Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. So thank you for hearing this tonight. So basically, for the past maybe month, maybe a little bit longer, I've been trying to have, as a guest, to have the Friends of Roosevelt Park speak before the council. I have tried the way that we normally go through, which would be to invite as a guest. And then I was told that there was too many guests on the docket that night, which was true, so I pulled that. And then I was told to resubmit it for the next available date, which I did. And then I got an email and was told that it was too political. And, you know, we had talked about other ways to do it. And then I had thought on that last night and I said, no, I'm going to get him in on as guest because summer's coming and I wanted to hear them out. So third time, it was a change of rules. So what I had to do then was write as a resolve, so that's how we got here tonight. So I did do that. I've jumped through the hoops and I'm asking, because there's new information that we have heard, there's new counselors here. And it's been, I think, about two years that an area of Roosevelt Park is closed off, toxic signs where our children go for, you know, two years. There's lead, there've been lead found there. There's lead in the rest of the park, but there's definitely lead in that area. So I'm asking that we give another chance, just about, you know, the, the new information that we have about a way to get around and clean up the toxic part of Roosevelt, which is to rescind the bond and resubmit to clean up the toxins when the CPC has the money and the funding. I've spoken with them. So I'm asking you to please vote yes and allow members of our community to come before us and speak about a very important matter in our city, which is to clean up toxic hazardous waste in a school area. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Karen Cologne Hayes. Before I go, I just certainly want to change some of that narrative to my fellow colleague is hoops in legal matters, and that was the truth. So you, Counsel Karen Cologne Hayes, you asked me once. So you, you, Counselor Karen Cologne Hayes, you asked me once, I believe you called the clerk first, and I'm not going to ask people, but I just want to give the fact pattern.
Yeah.
The fact was, you called the clerk and asked me to put in the docket. The clerk told you without me knowing that there was already two guests in the docket, and we had a discussion, several councils, that several meetings have gone pretty long. And having more than one guest is probably not an idea, a good idea. So when you called me, I immediately said, for next week, not even knowing what the topic was, I said, not next week because we have two guests. I will send you the dates and we can work forward. So there was never a discussion about not allowing you to do it. But after thinking about the topic, which, yes, is political, again, we've used the, we've never used, and I'm not saying it's right, wrong, or different, that's why the council voted on this. We never used the guest spot to really have any type of debate. That's why we put public comment in, which was a long road for this committee to do. And we even limited that topics to what was in the agenda and under a certain timeframe. So after thinking about it, I did not want to allow, not under, not for this particular topic, but for any topic, the guest spot to be used, which has really been informative. Corps come in, Marlin Public Library, monuments, we've never used it as something that's been debated, good, bad, or indifferent, right? And I just felt the integrity of using that spot, I'm not saying you meant this, could go astray, right? So I said to you, I will let you know when the next available date, which, which is actually was last week, which, which was last week, because the agenda was already done last week, which was this week. Which I said to you, reading the rulebook, I have the ability, like any council up here, to ask for a vote for a guest. So if somebody wanted to have the city plan and Michelle Romero come up right now, most councils understand, you can ask, there's usually a vote taken, right? You can vote. So I said the most fair and equitable way would be to put the resolve in the docket and we will vote on it. I talked to Council McDonald about looking at the rules, which I'm trying to get the rules to be updated this year. So the idea, I think, of, of saying hoops, Counselor, is not fair to me or the fellow counselors. And the idea that I try to restrict it, I didn't try to restrict it because of the topic. I just feel as a counselor, when we allow any, the guest spot to become, and I use the term weaponized, right? If we're going to use that to be political, right, then these dockets can get really, really busy, really, really quick. And if the council wants to do that, that's the beauty of the vote. That is the beauty of the resolve. But I, I just, I just feel sometimes when you use the word hoops, and, and, and that was the truth. Like, I lied to you when you called me and said there was already two guests on there. I didn't even know who the guest was. So before we open it up, I just wanted to say what my side was, and that's exactly what was done. You put it on the docket last week, we're going to vote on it tonight, and you move forward. Thank you. Counselor, I believe, O'Malley's first.
Thank you. I, I think y'all know where I am on this. And I, and I feel, I feel for the, the, the concern about, you know, having people come up here and like, like, like badmouth us all, and, and that's a legitimate concern. And I think that one of the reasons why we implemented public comment was to allow there to be people to come and speak to us. And we put in rules of decorum in terms of how people can behave. And I think that when you have a community group that wants to present in a, in a, in a adult and respectful manner, following the same type of rules of decorum that we try our best and not always, we don't always get it, but we try our best to adhere to, I don't think that there's a danger in inviting them. I think that it only brings more people to their side. I, I happen to support them, so I don't think that's a bad thing. But I think that not allowing this conversation to happen in the public just pushes it into people's living rooms and, and organized. And there's already talks about a ballot question about Roosevelt Park. So I do think that having this conversation here is valuable for all of us. Personally, I do agree. I think that if we're going to clean. I was very surprised to find out that there was lead in Roosevelt Park. Personally affected by it, I went to the Salemwood School, I played in that dirt, I was also a digger. And that type of stuff concerns me. And I think that whether it ends up being turf or not turf, I want to be on the council, and I think we all want to be on the council, that cleans it up. And cleans it up so that even if it ends up being turf this time, in ten years from now, when we have to replace it, it maybe could be grass then, or it could continue to be turf. But at least give the community of the future the option to have grass. And I think that cleaning it to a depth that allows that now is going to be a lot cheaper for us in the long run than not. So I think it's great to have them comment. I support your paper. Thanks.
Council O'Malley, Council Winslow.
Yeah, you know, one of the first accomplishments when I was elected council at large, working with then-council president Di Maria, was on getting public comment in our rules. I remember during my debates, Counselor Dark Angelo, who I was able to, you know, get more votes then, he specifically said he didn't want public comment. So that was a determinative thing in my election, when I said I was definitely in favor of public comment. But knowing that, you know, we wanted to have limitations, and we worked with Counselor Di Maria to create some fair rules that allowed public comment, because I always felt it frustrating that actually Stee and Warren would show up and not be able to comment. So I always felt bad that they couldn't say anything. So here they are sitting here, because they'd sit out there. And they were really an inspiration to make sure, God, that at least the public could come up and speak to what was on the agenda that day. And if you remember, early on in cannabis, former Counselor Kinnon came up and basically asked for the same favor of the council. That, that instead of going through public comment, which he would have his two minutes to talk, he wanted to have a lengthy presentation on cannabis. And this council voted against that. Because it was the feeling of the council that we created this avenues to balance the need to work efficiently versus having some avenue for the public to comment on the issues that were before the council. So I think in that case, I mean, I think many counselors here may have, may, may view Counselor Kinnon different than this. But I think what was then an appropriate response to Counselor Kinnon's request for a lengthy time to talk, talk to something of very controversy, that, that we limited to public comment. So I, I think that's just something to remember. We already faced this. And as a council, we did decide that public comment was really the appropriate place for people to bring up topics. And I appreciate Counselor Cologne Hayes bringing up this resolution as a way to discuss it, and we've, we've heard from people. I mean, what I do have to say is that, related to this, the lead contamination, we already have a process that, that many people signed a petition that the city is doing to get public input. That is a process that's set up under the Mast DEP, three-ten CMR, four-hundred, forty, which, the, the, the mass contingency plan, that sets out a public process that we get notices of, that the city is obligated to make comments on. So there's a process that the Friends of, Friends have forced the city to undertake through that regulation. So we already have a process to get community input on what's going on out there. That's a decision that the Friends made, you know, and I could say. The other thing that really gets me to hear these comments about delays, what really frustrates me the most is that about a year and a half ago, we had gotten our Conservation Commission to approve the work to remove the soil here. Our Conservation Commission approved that. We, we were at that time ready to do what was called a release abatement measure, to remove the lead that is fenced off. And many people in the Friends of Roosevelt chose to basestly appeal that. And, you know, maybe you can understand citizens appealing at one level of DEP to kind of make sure that they're getting a fair voice from their government, and that's why we have different levels of government. But when our regional DEP office basically rejected that claim as baseless, they chose then to appeal that to the state office. Again, basestly, we spent a whole year as a city, city resources, to do that. We could have, a year and a half ago, addressed this lead contamination, didn't hear people to come in here tonight and claiming that they're determined to address this lead contamination. And that's the key focus, again, to me, a year and a half ago, we could have addressed this. There was not the thought of doing that a year and a half ago. This is just, to me, another means to try to delay the process here. We have a public involvement process that the Friends of Roosevelt has petitioned, the city is following that. I don't see a need to go outside of that process. And so I am not supportive. Let's get on. I mean, I think the other thing you heard tonight, like, I'd certainly, you know, we know that the process we are following, DEP has very strict standards. These apply to every single inch of the state, irregardless of the neighborhood. We are following that. Whether we as a city decide to spend more money to dig deeper, that's fine. But to continue to hear about this issue of turf versus grass that we did debate two years ago, and why it's been two years is because of these baseless things that have delayed addressing this. So I just can't support bringing a group that strategy has been to just delay this and now is claiming that lead is the big thing. Well, where the heck, why weren't you making those claims a year and a half ago? And, you know, and letting us move ahead to remove this contamination. So I, I can't support this. And I, I do, the other thing I have to say is, just the representations tonight. Counselor Murphy, I, I mean, I do have to say, one of the things I, there was always a comment in law school about when you put something on trial, there's the trial you prepare for, the trial you do, and then the trial that you thought you should have done. And I think that's the same thing that you face when you do public processes. There's always the type of thing and goal you have in creating a public process, there's the one you end up having. And then there's the type of thing, you can always have the, the process to think you're doing better. And I do have to say that, you know, Counselor Murphy, as a ward five counselor, heard from the public that the initial meeting that she held was, did not reach out enough. And then she did schedule a second meeting where we went and it was translated in all the languages that typically are translated at Salemwood School. I personally knocked on Laura's door and talked to her. So she can't say she didn't know. She was invited to that meeting. And, and so it's frustrating to hear this consistent thing that we did not make efforts to outreach to the neighborhood. So I think that's, that's the other thing, is like, we have had public processes, this has had as much public processes as we have. We have an ongoing public process that the Friends have, have, by petition and right, having us go through. So let's go through the process that's out there, not have a second one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counsel Murphy, and then I'm going to go to Counsel McDonald, then Counselor Karen Cologne Hayes. So Counsel Murphy, floor is yours. Let me just put your mic.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Steve, thank you. Try not to repeat exactly what you said. There was nothing you said that I disagree with. So I can just put my name with, with those statements. But just to put this in perspective for some folks that maybe haven't been here through this whole thing, and for the public. So the second meeting that Counselor Winslow was talking about was held on November twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. And we translated those notices into six different languages. At the request of the principal, the fly was also translated and given, given to children to take home. Additionally, Superintendent Otieri put out a connect message to parents of all students enrolled in the Marlin Public School systems. On December tw- eleventh, that's when we put out the notice about elevated lead levels, because we had just found out about them. And we had a public notice distributed to Salemwood Schools and Abutters to the park that a portion of the park had been closed due to elevated lead levels. There was language at the bottom of the notice saying that this was in six different languages, saying this was an important notice, please haven't translated. So now we go to the public involvement plan. January twenty-first, the Friends of Roosevelt Park, I'm sorry, January twenty-twenty-one, Friends of Roosevelt Park initiated the public involvement plan process, called a PIP. Mid-February twenty-one, Nagel Associates, who's the expert that we work with, designated it a PIP site. On April twenty, on April fifteenth, we had a public meeting on the draft publication of the PIP. Flyers were distributed to the School, Abutters, Friends of Roosevelt Park. The entire fly was translated into six languages, printed in the paper and posted on the website. So when people say we haven't communicated, we have communicated. June fourth, the final PIPs were submitted to the DEP and notices also sent out to Abutters and Friends of Roosevelt Park. Once again, every, you know, six different languages. So then, it's Counsel Winslow, and this is the part that really irks me. I guess I use the word irks. So on January fifteenth, going back a year, January fifteen, twenty-twenty, okay, the notice of intent for Roosevelt Park was submitted to CONCON. That's our Conservation Commission, okay? January fifteenth, it was submitted. January twenty-eighth, the first public hearing was held. February twenty-fifth, same year, twenty-twenty, the second public hearing was, was held. March eleventh, so we're, you know, we're within like, you know, eight-week timeframe for a lot to have gone on here. The Conservation Commission issued the orders of conditions for Roosevelt Park. April first, the Friends of Roosevelt Park appealed the order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission. October ninth, it took from April to October, so once again, we're, we're, time is, time is ticking in the letters in the ground that we know about that we had wanted to take out and would have taken out. October ninth, DEP issues a superseding order of conditions on Roosevelt Park. October sixteenth, Friends of Roosevelt Park appealed the superseding orders. Now we're into March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one, over a year. And a year and months later from the initial order of the CONCON. So, you know, when you talk about delay, and you talk about lead, and you make it seem like we at the city council aren't doing anything. We had the money, we could have done something with it, and it hasn't happened. So I am not in favor of take, moving, moving tonight in favor of having anyone speak, especially people who aren't experts, because we have been dealing with experts for three years, coming up with a good, solid plan for Roosevelt Park that will be a benefit to the entire community, the schoolchildren. It's supported in, by the Athletic and Human Services Director of the schools, sports teams, many neighbor, many neighbors. I know not you, Laura, but there are a lot of people outs, okay, well, you can shake your head. So there are people who do support it, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm just, it's time to move this forward. You know, the council has voted on it, there's, I have more dates here. I'll submit this to the city clerk so he can post it with the, with the minutes.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Counselor Carrie McDonald. And Counsel McDonald, let's remind you, we've lost you twice. Doesn't mean we've lost you, but we just lose the monitor, so keep speaking and we'll fix it if it breaks again.
Okay, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yeah, can everybody hear? Can everybody hear?
Well, I just briefly wanted to say that I would welcome the chance to understand more about the situation with the lead contamination in the soil. I mean, I was not present for the discussions about the previous, you know, the previous council discussions about the park. So I will also reach out to the Conservation Commission and, and understand their process a little bit more. Thank you for that. I do think that it's valuable to hear from our residents, and I understand this is a, this is a difficult issue where we've been locked in a lot of hard discussion and, 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 you know, just frustration over time, as I think everybody wants to improve the park and have it be an environmentally sustainable plan. I do think it's really important to remediate the lead, so, and, and fully remove that. So I, I, I welcome the chance to hear more about that. And I also, you know, want to recognize, as Council President Spatafor said earlier, I think we just need some better standards in our rules for what qualifies as a presentation here. So that, you know, what may seem political to somebody may not to another. And so finding a way to do this, I, I mean, I'll just note that we're kind of debating the issue right now about whether to debate the issue, right? And so just finding. And so, just finding a way to be more expeditious in our process to, to figure out when we want to entertain these or not, and then actually have the discussion, I think will serve us all and, and avoid, you know, all of those things getting, getting tied up in, in timing and, 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 and other agendas and so on. So, I, I really support some rule clarification about the process and streamlining that and making it fair and appropriate for getting these on the agenda going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Karen Cologne-Hayes, you're next. Hold on, Counsel, let me just put your mic on here. There you go, you're all set.
Okay, thank you. So, I agree with my fellow Counselor McDonald that we definitely need to be very clear, very intentional about what our rules are, so this doesn't happen and there's not a miscommunication. Also, I want to say right now, this feels, we did just have a presentation here, I was timing it, we had two counselors go through an entire presentation of dates, and, you know, it was a presentation, it took 33 minutes of listening between the two of them. So, I really think it would be very disrespectful if we did not give the Friends of Oak Grove, our residents who vote us in here, the same opportunity. We got to hear all this and nobody can respond. It's not fair, it's not giving people a voice, it's censorship in my, it's just, it's just silencing people. I'm really frustrated at what just happened here. So, I think that next week, I put time limits on it, I told someone, you know, we, we, I did everything that was asked, put the person who was gonna talk, how long they were gonna talk. Right now, this is taking way more time than we had scheduled, it was less than 10 minutes, and our public doesn't get to speak. So, the presentation, I read all those documents too, there's a lot of miscommunications and there are a lot of data in there that I'm gonna question, and just like we all know, there are experts, you could put experts in a room looking at the same project, and you can have five people there, and they could all say something different. We all know this. So, I think it's just fair that now the Friends of Roosevelt Park have a chance to speak and show us their documentation, so we can hear it like we heard from everybody here tonight. And I really hope my fellow counselors vote to hear this, because we're here, elected by the people, to make very difficult decisions. And there's a difficult decision on the table right now, and I don't care if they have come in here and they have talked about it for years, and whether or not you think people are delaying things, it's still the right thing to do. It's not personal, it's not personal, nothing we do up here should be personal. It's about the right environmental justice. And so, please, please, allow them to opportunity to respond to what just happened here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't be voting for this, and, because I, I do believe that there is a public process, and there is a mechan, mechanism in place, sorry, it's getting late. And so, and I do think, as you just said, you know, there could be experts on, on either side, and having one side or the other side here without having a, a two-way communication is not really where I think, you know, what the presentation, you know, part of the agenda was for. I do believe there is a mechanism for them to be heard, and I, I think that's the avenues they should, and, you know, maybe they do have the meetings and you, you, they, I, they have been on Zoom, they have seen some of the, in, over the, the past years. So I think that's the proper mechanism, not just this one. But thank you.
My mic's off. Anybody else? Okay, call the question. Read the question and call it again. Ma'am, Mr. Clerk?
Just read it so everybody's refreshed and we can take the vote.
307-22, resolve the City Council welcome the Friends of Roosevelt Park, represented by Laura Thompson, to discuss the fenced-off contaminated area at Roosevelt Park at the scheduled meeting of June 28, 2022, for maximum time of 10 minutes.
Clerk will call the roll.
I need a second.
Oh, I need a second. Seconded by Counsel O'Malley. Clerk will call the roll.
So a yes brings a man and a no doesn't.
Correct. A yes brings a man and a no doesn't. Cologne-Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Crow.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy. O'Malley. Sika. Simonelli. Winslow. Spatafora. Nope. Fails three to seven. Next order of business.
Paper 308-22, committee report, the rules and ordinance having considered Paper 286-22, make the following report that the committee recommend that the order be reported out favorably to the city council, full city council.
Counsel Crow.
Page one, Counsel, three?
Yeah.
I don't have it on my page, did I?
Next one? Committee reports. Yeah, I'm sorry, I had the wrong page number. Gotta fix these page numbers for me, Captain. On Counsel Crow's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Oh, 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 oh. On Counsel Crow's motion to receive the committee report, Clerk will call the roll. Cologne-Hayes.
Yes.
Condon. Crow.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Sika.
Yes.
Simonelli. Winslow. Spatafora. Spatafora, yes. Counsel, Counsel Crow for the?
Counsel President.
Yep, go ahead, Counsel.
Just very quickly, I, I do need to leave the call, and so I just wanted to make sure you didn't spend like 10 minutes trying to fix the tech if I left.
I appreciate it, thank you, Counsel. Thanks for joining, and we're gonna start the meeting now, because we can do all in favor and all opposed. Thanks, Counsel McDonald. All right, you can end that meeting, Mr. President, if you don't mind, just so we, oh, let's see, was it there? Okay, well, it's on, I don't, all right, just mute it.
We can leave it on, we just, we don't have to roll call anymore.
Yeah. Okay. Just minimize it. It's the minus button. The dash, to the, the left of that. We were, right there. Thank you. All right. Counsel, Counsel Crow for the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Counsel Crow. Oh, I'm sorry, your mic's not on, Counsel. I was, I'm so happy that I don't have to call, the clerk doesn't have to call the roll call anymore, we can speed it up.
Thank you. Over the last couple of weeks, I will be brief and actually explain why there are some papers on here that people would expect to be on here that are not on here. But, over the last couple of weeks, the Ordinance Committee has been meeting to take up a few different cannabis, you know, recommendations, and this one is on the docket today, because this was with Counsel Sika, and that started the clock, since it was on our docket, and we had something to refer. So the motion tonight is going to be just refer this to a joint planning and ordinance committee that is going to happen in August, and I'll get the exact date next week. So, I, I just, really, again, briefly, there is another paper that Counsel Linehan had put, put forth, and it was more of in concept, and then through the committee work, we have a couple of papers that will be on the docket next week. We actually moved it to next week in difference to, to of my, well, now they're not even on here anyway, two of the Ordinance Committee members who would not be able to be here today. So those will be on the docket. Again, they'll all be referred, well, will take a vote to be referred to planning and ordinance that will happen in August. So, I don't know if you want to read this order, Clerk, or, and, and then the motion will be to refer this to planning and ordinance for hearing.
Okay, it's Paper 286-22, order that, that in the interest of promoting a fair and transparent marijuana licensing process, free from political influence and the potential for state ethics violation, that the code of the City of Malden be amended to change. Special permit granting authority for marijuana establishments from Malden City Council and Malden Plan Board, including amending the following sections, it's quite a few. Section 6.08.070B, definition of special permit by deleting as further amended by City Council, Paper 283 of 2018. Section 6.08.070D2B by deleting City Council where mentioned and replacing with Planning Board. Section 12.12.010A, first paragraph, first phrase by striking City Council and replacing with Planning Board as follows, except for marijuana retail, retailer, marijuana cultivator, independent marijuana testing laboratory, marijuana product, product manufacturer, marijuana research facility, and marijuana transporter, where a special permit shall be required by the Planning Board in accordance with MCC 12.12.020. Section 12.12.190, first paragraph by striking City Council and replacing with Planning Board as follows, a marijuana establishment as defined by, defined by the ordinance, to expressly only include marijuana retailer, marijuana cultivator, independent marijuana testing laboratory, marijuana product, product manufacturer, marijuana research facility, and marijuana transporter, may be allowed only in the highway business, industrial one and industrial two zoning districts of the marijuana establishment overlay district, only by special permit granted by the Planning Board, and only in conformance with the following controls and requirements. Section 12.12.190B, section 12.12.190G, section 12.12.190G4, section 12.12.190H by deleting City Council where written and replacing with Planning Board. Section 12.28.010E by deleting City Council where mentioned and replaced with Planning Board.
On Counsel Crow's motion to send to a joint planning and ordinance committee, great job, Clerk.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor? I had a hiccup there. Sika? Probably call the roll on this one.
Yeah, we, we should.
Yep. Clerk will call the roll. Cologne-Hayes.
Yes.
Condon. Crow.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Sika.
Yes.
Simonelli. Winslow. Spatafora. Spatafora, yes. Carrie's nine to zero. What?
No.
She's not here to vote, so, next order of business. She's yelling from the foyer. Next order of business.
Can I read all these?
Leave them all together.
Counsel licenses, read them all together. Committee report, the license committee having considered the following papers, 278-22, 280-22, 281-22, 282-22, 283-22, 284-22, 285-22, make the following report that the committee recommends these petitions be reported out favorably to the full council.
On Counsel Sika's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Counsel Sika for the committee report. Oh, I gotta turn Counsel Sika's mic on, I may apologize. Counsel Sika.
Thank you, Counsel Spatafora. The committee met last week and went over all these licenses. The compliance guys said there were no issues, so we made a unanimous motion to pass them out favorably. Motion to grant.
Any questions for the Counselor? Seeing none, hearing none, and Counsel Sika's motion to grant the petitions, all those in favor?
Aye.
What? You don't have to.
On Counsel Sika's motion to grant all the petitions, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Looks like ayes have it, ten, nothing. Nine, I'm sorry, you're right, the other two councils jumped off, I apologize, yep. On, next order of business. The docket is clear. 9:45, ladies and gentlemen. I will open it up to personal privilege. Counselor Winslow hit the gun first. Counsel Winslow.
All right. I wish I was playing Jeopardy.
I know, hit the button.
For a hundred thousand dollars, something like that, but, but just, I want to remind folks, we have continuing public processes related to the MBTA and the bus redesign, and I, I appreciate that our transportation planner, John Alessi, has taken the initiative with the MBTA to have a special meeting just for Malden, coming up this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It'll be both a in-person and a hybrid meeting, so if people have more comments and questions about that, please come out and talk. There's a whole series of more meetings in, in July as well, so, so if you want more information, you can go to the MBTA website, but this is a specific Malden meeting. There was one, I think last week, that was to the Malden area, but this will be a specific meeting to get Malden's feedback on the bus redesign.
And Counsel Winslow, not to interrupt you, but that's, that's just so, that's for the service, the proposed potential service cuts for the City of Malden, right?
So, well, it's, it's, this is bus revitalization, so it's, it changes, there's some improvements, there's some cuts, so, so it's just a whole overall thing, so, so it, there's some improvements, some cuts, and then, just everybody, just Ward Six, we are having our Fourth of July celebration at Trapton Park from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Fourth of July. Looking forward to having that, and please feel, anybody feel, feel, feel free to reach out to me if you're interested in volunteering. We could always use more hands on deck. Thank you very much, great.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Counsel Karen Cologne-Hayes.
Thank you. I just wanted to say how great, this weekend was packed with such wonderful events, and I want to thank the organizers of Pride, which happened on Saturday at Cordero Lee Park. It was such an amazing event, it's, it's been growing over the past few years, so I just want to thank everyone who planned that. And then also, Juneteenth. Juneteenth was on Sunday at Lincoln Commons, it was tremendous. All of the planning over the past months really came out, and there was people there, even though the weather was a little shaky at first, and it was Father's Day, so I'm gonna give a shout out to my husband, Pat, who was carting tables back and forth, and 50 chairs, and all over from Pride to Juneteenth on Father's Day, so I want to thank him for that. And also, they left already, but I was, also wanted to thank the Friends of Roosevelt Park just for showing up. We didn't have any hopes that that would pass tonight, but they did get their voices heard, and people got to hear from the counselors, so that was great, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Karen Cologne-Hayes. Next is Counsel Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo those sentiments that my colleague Karen Cologne-Hayes, Counsel Karen Cologne-Hayes, just mentioned. It was a great time this weekend. It was, it was, was it Saturday night at Cordero Lee Park? Or Saturday during the day was nice over there, good turnout. And the event down at Lincoln Commons was great, you know, I was a little nervous about it at the beginning, but, you know, it was a wonderful time, people just really, you know, just enjoyed themselves. I wouldn't mind hosting it again down at Lincoln Commons, to be honest with you. It was, it was nice, it was a lot of hard work from a lot of folks, yourself and, I know, Cor and the Mayor's Office, I know, did a lot of work, helping out up there, and all the volunteers, all the people that helped bring that together, that's what it takes, especially post-COVID, now that we're trying to get back out there again. And speaking of that, Fourth of July celebrations for Ward Seven is well on its way down at the old Lincoln Commons, and we will be celebrating our Fourth of July on the third. So, starting around 9:30 or so, and I would say that if anyone does want to volunteer too, they could reach out to me, we could always use a few extra hands. I think it's gonna be a fun-packed day that day, so, I even brought squirt guns for everybody. Everybody gets a squirt gun to cool everybody off down at that park. So, hope to see everybody there. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Simonelli. Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two quick things. This Saturday, June 25th, Pine Banks Park Dog Park is Good Dog Appreciation Day, so if you have a puppy, bring them down, the dog must be on a leash, and each dog will get free doggy ice cream, and it's from 10 to 12. So that's gonna be kind of a fun day, Doggy Appreciation Day, 10 to 12 this Saturday, Dogs on a Leash at Pine Banks, at the Dog Park, obviously, the Dog Park. Pardon me? Yes, you can take Duke. And the Ward Five Independence Day celebration will be on Monday, the 4th, from 10 to 2 at the Forestale Park. So get those bicycles ready and those cakes baked, and we've got lots of medals and prizes, and looking forward to having a great celebration and seeing everybody. It's been a long two years not to have had, had this party, so, anyway, thank you. And once again, if anyone wants to help, certainly Ward Five can use help too. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. I was just chatting with the clerk. Listen, it's great to certainly duplicate the effort, but we do have a council meeting next week, which is televised, so we can remind everybody that the Fourth of July is next week too.
Oh, we will.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Counsel O'Malley.
Thank.
The lights went off.
Thank you, Counsel President. I just wanted to remind everyone that this coming Thursday, I don't know, what's the day? This coming Friday, June 24th. This coming Friday, June 24th, at 6 p.m., the Converse Memorial Library, the Malden Public Library, will be hosting the Converse family reunion, which is pretty cool. There, for those who don't know, the Malden Public Library was donated by the, our first mayor, Elijah Converse, and his family to commemorate and memorialize his son, Frank Converse, who was the first person murdered in a bank robbery by the postmaster. So maybe the first going postal.
That's alleged though, right? They never proved.
It had to do with gambling. It had to do with gambling debt too. It really, it had to do with the fact that he was, yeah. So that's going on this coming Friday at 6 p.m. Independence Day, yes, is also July 2nd. So Ward Four, it will be July 2nd, Saturday, July 2nd, 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. And so this, the celebrating it on July 2nd is actually probably one of the one thing that former Counsel Kenan and I agreed on. It's the date that the Declaration of Independence was actually signed, July 2nd. So come out on Saturday. If you'd like to volunteer, feel free to reach out to me by phone, 781-870-0041, or by email, romalley@cityofmalden.org. Lastly, July 28th at 10 a.m., and I don't want to be taking the, I feel like I'm taking away the privilege from our city clerk, but July 28th at 10 a.m., we're going to be dedicating the plaza to...
June.
Oh, sorry, my apologies, June 28th. June 28th, thank you. June 28th at 10 a.m., we're going to be dedicating the plaza. So next week, to Ed Lucy, former mayor, Ed Lucy, you know, he was a renowned mayor, he's been a mentor to many, and it's really great that we're going to be able to dedicate the plaza. Former Counselor Debbie Di Maria really led the charge with the help of the city clerk and many other people, including Eric Rubin, the Public Facilities Director. So come on out and see the dedication of our plaza, the Lucy Plaza.
Thank you, Counselor. Yep, so it's next Tuesday, for those watching, at 10 a.m. to the plaza, to the, next to the Malden City Hall. Counsel Sika.
Thank you, Counsel Spatafora. I just want to wish all Malden students a happy summer. Today was their last day of school. Counsel Spatafora and I had the pleasure of bowling with them all afternoon at the Townline Ten Pin. We had a great crowd for a beautiful day, so I just want to thank everybody for coming out. And I'm not going to get into the Fourth of July, but Ward Eight is hosting on the Fourth of July, Monday, the Fourth of July, from 9 to 12. I'll give out some more details at next week's meeting. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Hit my button.
I didn't shut her off, did I?
I did, sorry. And really fast, I hope everybody, you know, this Saturday, we got the Phantom Gourmet coming to Malden Square from 12 to 3. I got my tickets, can't wait to go. I hope everybody, you know, comes down and supports our small local businesses and all the other ones that they're bringing in. They're saying that they could bring a crowd of 10,000, so be prepared to, you know...
200 exchange.
It's what?
Give the address.
I can't hear you.
200 exchange, give the address.
200 exchange. 200 exchange. 200 exchange. To start, is that 11 o'clock? Is the opening thing at 11 o'clock, Maria, do you know? I think the general event is 12 to 3, but there is...
Then what ticket you bought?
It depends on what ticket you bought, yeah. The general event is from 12 to 3. They haven't, I think it's around 11, but check out Phantom Gourmet and they'll tell you all about their food festival and it's in Malden and it looks like it's going to be a blast, so hope you guys can come down on Saturday for the, for the event. It looks like it's going to be great.
Yeah, and there's a code red that went out this evening on it.
There's... Oh, perfect.
About, about public transportation parking.
Oh, okay.
Counsel Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. As always, there's so much going on in Malden as last week evident and going forward, but you cannot miss an opportunity, even though you can remind people next week, to make sure you get as many volunteers as you can, so you can go on the second to Ward Four, then go to Ward Seven, then come to Ward One on the Third of July, that evening for our movie night, our annual movie night. Starts at 6 o'clock, we have a bounce house and some other fun things. And that sundown, we will start the movie, we haven't chosen the movie yet, so just come and be surprised. And for this and the actual Independence Day, the Fourth of July, Counsel Condon and I have teamed up again. And so on the Fourth, we will have from 9 to 1 at Dever Park, pony rides and races and all the fun things that an Independence Day celebration brings. But it does take a lot of people to do those, to really make sure that everyone has a good time and everyone's safe. So if you can volunteer, please reach out to Counsel Condon or myself and we'll put you to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I just want to say one thing. I spoke to Counsel Linehan last week about just making sure that there are two important things happening, coming up. Counsel Winslow did mention the public, the meeting on the MBTA planned bus route changes coming Thursday at 6. I think it's important for the, well, not just the Ward Three residents, but one of the proposals is the bus route that is servicing the former Malden Hospital site. That is on the list to be discontinued and critical for any equitable access up to that area and certainly any potential planned revitalization of the pond. That bus route, which I believe is the 99, is slated to be discontinued unfortunately. So if you use that now, you probably want to go into that meeting. And the final thing going on, particularly Ward Three, is the master plan for the Felsmere Pond. We have three public meetings, the third one, this will be on June 30th, so it's next Thursday at 6 p.m. and there'll be a Zoom meeting, that link is on the city website. And then finally, you know, I will say this again, next week, the Ward Councilors really deserve a lot of endeavors for the amount of work they put up for the Fourth of July and Independence Day. It is not easy, they make it look easy. And then all the other events that happened last week, there was Pride, there was the Juneteenth, I believe there was the dedication for the COVID. I mean, all these, these events take, besides money, they take volunteers and help and you can certainly see what goes into it. It makes, it makes it much easier than they make it look, so hats off to them. And finally, Counsel O'Malley made a great point of the Lucy family, especially Ed, who's done, served, I think, in various levels of government, he gets his, he will get his bench or plaza next week. I got the call though, I get to go on the, I think, is it the Ed Lucy Show tomorrow? So it will be taped and it will be coming out, so I look, it's, yeah, I think it'll be on tomorrow, I think it's going to be on 7. So I get the honor to sit down with the former Ed Lucy, so if anybody's bored and want to see the former interviewee, please join in. So you tune in, thank you, Counsel. So on Counsel Semenelli's motion adjourned, seconded by Counsel Sika, all those in favor? All those opposed? Clerk, my meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
All right.